All right, Sergeant Arms, please call our meeting to order.
Thank you. Today, our Chaplain of the Day is Pastor Eric Boylan. He is Firm Believers Outreach Ministries, and he's invited by Councilwoman Patrice Robinson.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Would you please bow your heads? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the many abundant blessings that you have stored for our life. The measures of health we need to fulfill our calling and for our friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in youthful work for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well as the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to reject you. Thank you for the loving us so. Thank you for the abundance and gracious nature. In the Scripture you have said that citizens ought to obey the governed authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor and the various levels of city officials, and particularly for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern aimed towards conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and the true needs of our people, akin thirst for justice and races, a confidence in which is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when we are honest disagreements, personally peace in their lives and joy in tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them assurance in what we would please measure and be pleasing to you and would benefit those who live and work in around our beloved city of Memphis, Tennessee. It is in the most blessed name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as far out.
All right. Madam Comptroller, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Brown, Canali, Colvett, Conrad, Ford, Fully Love, Hetchpeth, Jones, Morgan, Morrison, Robinson, Swerengen, Chairman Boyd.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Want to get the approval of previous meeting minutes. Thank you. Ms. Ford, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I do see the minutes. I do find them in order, but I'd like to make one amendment. I don't know if I need to ask for reconsideration or whatnot, or if I could just do a simple request. There was one item where we discussed the deannexation of the river bottoms. I had a community meeting last week at Mitchell High School where we were discussing a lot of items, and this item did actually come up. And many of the people in the neighborhood were very hesitant on why that area was being deannexed. And the conversation turned into one to where it made me have to think about my decision on there. So I'm not asking for the vote to be completely reconsidered. I'm just asking, can we modify my vote to a no? It would not change the way that the vote came out. But looking at what the constituents were discussing regarding South Cypress Creek and whatnot, I believe it would be more appropriate for my vote as their representative to be no. It would not change their vote, and can we do that as amended?
If we do it without objection, but I do see some other council members in the queue. I don't know if that's pertaining to that item or not. Councilman Conrad, are you in the queue for this item? Councilwoman Swerengen, are you in the queue for the item that Councilman Ford is discussing? Okay, so we can hold this item without objection. And I don't foresee it changing the outcome of it, Mr. Ford. Are you just trying to?
I just need to change my yes/no to a no vote because of the information that was given with a lot of uncertainty about what may be going on in that area. We will be having another meeting next month. But in order to make sure that my vote represents the people, I'm just asking my yes vote to turn to no. It would not change the overall, it would still pass, but I need for the record for it to be a no.
Madam Comptroller, can you make that adjustment? I think I signed those already, so I need to amend those minutes to reflect that.
That's correct, sir. We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Swerengen, you're being recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move to hold item number 32. It's a resolution to expand funding for the Neighborhood Sentinel Program, designed to provide additional camera surveillance to all the city council districts. I'd like to remove it from the June 5, 2018 minutes to clarify certain language and funding questions until the next council meeting on July the 10.
All right. Ford, did you get that information off the minute? Can we do that without objection? Hold that item on our minutes?
Thirty-two.
All right, well, holding item number 32 off our minutes without objection.
Right.
All right. Anything else, Councilwoman Swerengen? Councilwoman Swerengen, you done?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right. Mr. Ford, can you please move this item as amended electronically, please?
I'd like to move the previous meeting minutes with those amendments.
All right. Sign no the council members in the queue to discuss our previous meeting minutes. Please vote on that item as amended.
Canali, yes. Colvett, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hetchpeth recused. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
Item passes. All right, again, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to our June 19, 2018 regular council meeting. If you guys care to speak on any item that's before the city council, please see our Sergeant in Arms and request a card. Please turn that card in previous to the item in which you are here to speak on. You cannot get a card during the debate of that item. We do not accept cards while we are discussing an item. So make sure that you write your name and address legibly so I can see it and read it, and call your name in accordance to the item in which you want to speak on. Also, we have a couple items that will be held from our council agenda. Item number five will be held for two weeks as well as item number 33. Item number five and 33 will be held for two weeks. Seeing nothing else, we do have our add-on, which was approved today in our executive session. We have items 40 through 59. Quite a bit are requesting same-night minutes as well. And that item was moved and approved to be added on downstairs in our executive session. With that being said, Madam Comptroller, please call. Oh, you know what, Councilwoman Robinson? I really appreciate you reminding me. Councilwoman Robinson, Chaplain of the Day.
Yes, it's my honor today to present the Chaplain of the Day. You stand. The City of Memphis, Tennessee, by the City Council. Greetings, be it hereby known that Pastor Eric Boylan, in recognition of a life of exemplary qualities, outstanding service to the city, meritorious involvement in humanitarian affairs, and demonstrated concern for governmental processes, has been appointed Chaplain of the Day for the Memphis City Council and is hereby entitled to all the honors, rights, privileges, and prerogatives appertaining to the office and to the display of this certificate given under the seal this 19th day of June, 2018, signed by our illustrious Chairman, Burleyan Boyd, and Patrice Robinson, Memphis City Council, District III. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Robinson. I do apologize for omitting that in my oversight. All right, Madam Comptroller, please call item number one.
Item number one is a resolution declaring June 19, 2018, as World Sickle Cell Day. This resolution is sponsored by Chairman Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. We will have my Vice Chairman, Councilman Frank Colvett, presenting this. This is something that I'm extremely excited about. I think we definitely need to bring more awareness to sickle cell. And so I saw it fitting that we call this the World Sickle Cell Day. This is exciting time, and I look forward to you guys receiving these resolutions. And it's an honor for me to have the opportunity to present it to you guys. Councilman Colvett, Vice Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for thinking of me. I know my family, my in-laws, are very involved in St. Jude and the amazing work they do there and are proud partners with us in the fight against sickle cell. Colleagues, whereas through the advocacy of the Sickle Cell Disease International Organization, the support of the Republic of Congo and the Republic of Senegal, and the commitment in the scientific world, the African Union, the United Nations, Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, World Health Organization, and the United Nations, the 19th of June was established as World Sickle Cell Awareness Day via a resolution adopted by the General Assembly of the United Nations. And whereas since 2008, World Sickle Cell Awareness Day has been held annually to increase public knowledge and raise awareness about sickle cell disease and the severe medical and social challenges endured by SCD consumers, patients, and their families, the struggles sufferers and their families endure. And whereas on May 19, 2018, St. Jude Children's Research Hospital hosted its second biennial pediatric adult regional sickle cell disease conference titled "A New Era in Sickle Cell Disease Treatment." And SCD consumers, patients, and stakeholders from all segments of the city of Memphis and the state of Tennessee, including those in research, education, treatment, and community-based social services, were in attendance. And whereas in addition to St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, other key contributors making substantial impact on sickle cell disease in research, education, awareness, treatment, and social support services across Memphis and the state of Tennessee include: Regional One Health, Diggs Kraus Adult Sickle Cell Center, Methodist Comprehensive Sickle Cell Center, University of Tennessee Health Sciences Center, West Cancer Center, the Sickle Cell Foundation of Tennessee, Q Source, School of Public Health, University of Memphis, the Department of Communication, College of Communication and Fine Arts, Vanderbilt Center of Excellence in Sickle Cell Disease, Mahari Medical College Sickle Cell Center, and a number of other regional and national researchers and medical treatment providers. And whereas through quality treatment, extensive new groundbreaking research and support system outreach, Memphis and the great state of Tennessee will continue to lead in providing quality treatment, disease and pain management, and social support services as all stakeholders strive to achieve the ultimate vision, the eradication and elimination of sickle cell disease. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Memphis does hereby declare June 19, 2018, World Sickle Cell Day throughout our great city. Be it further resolved that all Memphians are encouraged to pursue means and activities that enhance citizens' abilities to gain better education and awareness of sickle cell disease and to assist in the most feasible and practical ways possible to contribute towards outreach and caring for their fellow citizens and families who are directly impacted by sickle cell disease, and I so move.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Opinion in the chair, eyes have it, this item removed unanimously. And let's give it a round of applause. And those of you that are here for sickle cell, we do have copies of the resolutions for you. So we really appreciate you guys coming. All right, Madam Comptroller, please call item number two.
Item number two is a resolution honoring Fred Haslip and Justin Wilson, good Samaritans. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Robinson.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Thank you. It's with great pleasure that I introduce these two young men, Fred and Justin. Will you please come forward? Give them a hand as they come. Ms. Hibbler, will you please stand where you are? Ruth, just stand right there. Thank you, thank you. So on today, it is with great pleasure, colleagues, that I introduce you two young men who have done a marvelous job in our community of showing our humanitarian side. The Memphis City Council Resolution states, "Whereas it is with distinct honor that the Memphis City Council recognizes two of Memphis' young heroes, Fred Haslip and Justin Wilson. And whereas on April 24 of this year, in the Westwood Community, Fred and Justin noticed Ms. Ruth Hibbler, Fred's neighbor, having an issue reaching her home from the driveway after being dropped off. And whereas Fred and Justin asked Ms. Hibbler if she needed assistance getting to her home. Whereas once Ms. Hibbler stated she needed help, Fred and Justin grabbed Ms. Hibbler by the arms, took her to her door, introduced themselves, and waited until she entered her home and locked the door. And whereas on that day, Fred and Justin proved to Ms. Hibbler and the community that not all young people are bad. Now, give them a hand. Yes, yes, yes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Memphis City Council commends Fred Haslip and Justin Wilson, good Samaritans, whose swift decisions reflected their caring and civic attitudes in keeping with the highest tradition of humanitarian service. Adopted this June 19, 2018, Patrice Robinson, Burleyan Boyd, Chairman, I so move."
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Item passes unanimously.
Please continue to stand. We have a certificate of congressional recognition as well, presented to Fred Haslip in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community, signed by the Honorable Steve Cohen. Praise God.
Councilwoman Robinson, did you want the heroes to say a few words if they like? All right. Modest heroes, I understand. All right. Madam Comptroller, please call item number three.
Item number three is a resolution approving an honorary street name change in honor of Donald Wayne Murfree on Sangha Road between Thor Road and Fay Road. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Colvett.
Councilman Colvett, I see you making your way to the mic.
What a great day today. Recognizing some amazing people. Well, I have one more for a council to consider. My fellow councilmen. I'm not going to do this all alone, Ms. Murfree. Whereas upon occasion, the Memphis City Council approves the naming of specified public thoroughfares to honor citizens who have served this community. And whereas born in Houka, Mississippi, Mr. Murfree has been the chairman of the Cordova Community Center, housed in the old Cordova School located at 1017 Sangha Road for 32 years and active in the Cordova community for 47 years. Whereas Mr. Donald Murfree, a graduate of Overton High School, attended both Memphis State University and the William R. Moore Technical School. And whereas with a compassion for community-minded leadership, Mr. Murfree was at the helm of the Cordova Community Center Board from its inception and was elected its first chairman, a position he held until his death. Whereas Mr. Murfree oversaw the fundraising, nomination, and placement of the school building, originally built in 1913 on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas his commitment to Cordova extended beyond his needs, Mr. Murfree was happy to provide a community space for couples beginning their life journey in marriage and providing a meeting venue for community groups such as homeowners associations, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and the YMCA. And whereas during his tenure as chairman of the Cordova Community Center Board, he oversaw the community center becoming the first home of the Cordova branch of the Memphis Library System. Whereas Mr. Donald Murfree lived in Sangha Road and worked tirelessly for the betterment of the Cordova community with the help of his wife, some say more than help, she is the brains of the operation, and the support of his children, Zachary and Amanda Murfree, prior to his passing, Don, on June 25, 2017. And whereas the city council gratefully records and extends its sincere appreciation of Mr. Donald Wayne Murfree for his faithful and excellent service and rendered to our city as exemplary citizen worthy of this city's highest recognition and commendation. Now therefore be it resolved that Sangha Road between Sangha Road and Sangha Road between Thor and Fay Road be honorarily dedicated as Donald Wayne Murfree Road. Be it further resolved that the city engineers requested to affix a suitable marker, so designating such public thoroughfare. Mr. Chairman, with that, I move.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Opinion in the chair, eyes have it, removed unanimously.
Don's widow would like to address the group.
I just want to thank the city council. Don would be as humble and honored as I am nervous right now. I also want to thank Koi Haraway, who has worked with the city of the Community Center Board of Directors for initiating this and for Frank Colvett for presenting this resolution. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Don would be just so thrilled. Thank you so much. So honored.
Thank you. Madam Comptroller, please call item number four.
Item number four is a resolution approving a planned development located at 3588 East Holmes Road, north side of Holmes Road, 2,640 feet east of the intersection of Holmes Road.
Madam Comptroller, let's deviate. He's taking pictures, so what I'm going to do is come back to that item. Please go to item number 40.
Item number 40 on our add-ons is a resolution providing $909,402 in funding to Memphis Housing Authority for critical needs. This resolution is sponsored by the Finance Division.
Councilman Ford.
Mr. Chairman, the committee met today and considered this item. It recommends full approval, and I'd like to move it on the floor.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Sign no council members in the queue. Please cast your votes for item number 40, please.
And it doesn't say same night, but it should be same night on this one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so without objection, same-night minutes. All right. How many of, let me ask you guys this before we move forward with calling out the vote.
Canali, yes. It'll go away. Colvett, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hetchpeth, yes. Morgan abstained. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
Item passes. Please show Councilwoman Swerengen, Councilman Brown, and Councilwoman Fully Love as yeses, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So noted.
Item still passes. A question. How many items showing same-night minutes is not showing same-night minutes on the add-ons?
Only one, the order notes. It's not for same-night minutes, it's first reading, item number 59.
Yeah, item 59 is first reading. All right.
The rest of them are at the end of the caption, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I was just trying to make certain we were good. All right. Seeing Councilman Colvett back. Please call item number four.
Item number four is a resolution approving a planned development located at 3588 East Holmes Road, north side of Holmes Road, 2,640 feet east of the intersection of Holmes Road and Tullahoma Road, containing plus or minus 51.89 acres in the Conservation Agriculture District. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is PD-1806.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is our applicant for item number four present? Please come forward, sir, and when you get here, could I get your name and address, please?
It's Tim Moore, 4464 Park Avenue.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, this is item number four, case PD-1806. Is there any opposition? The opposition item for PD-1806. Mr. Chairman, did we get any cards on this case?
Just have Mr. Moore's card.
Outstanding. Mr. Chairman, colleagues, this case was heard here in committee. It did receive a favorable recommendation. We do have staff on hand. Should any of the members wish a presentation? But with that, I so move it to the floor.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Colvett, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Sign no council members in the queue on item number four. Please cast your votes for item four, please.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvett, yes. Conrad, recused. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpeth, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
Item passes. Please call item number six.
Item number six is a resolution approving a subdivision appeal located on the west side of East Irwin, plus or minus 180 feet south of the intersection of Princeton Avenue and East Irwin Drive, containing plus or minus .54 acre in the residential single-family-10 district. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is S-1808.
All right. Councilman Colvett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Is our applicant for item number six, S-1808, present? Tim, come on up. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Madam Comptroller is showing item number four, and granted, could you please make sure that we're, thank you.
Perfect. Can I get your name and address for the record, sir?
Tim Williams, 406 East Irwin Drive.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, this is item number six, case S-1808. Is there opposition to this case? We do have opposition. We do have a lot of opposition. Mr. Fay, could you come and just give us your name and address for the record, please?
Michael Fay of the Prime Development Group, 7520 Capital Drive, Germantown, Tennessee.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Outstanding, thank you very much. Did we get a bunch of cards on that?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this case was heard in committee. It received no recommendation, if I recall correctly, Mr. Morgan, no recommendation. We do have staff on hand, should we wish, and I do wish, a full presentation. We do have opposition to it, and to clarify, and I think staff will clarify, this is an appeal, so we need to make sure everybody understands the voting on it. But with that, I say move it to the floor for discussion.
All right, it's been moved by Counselman Collette, seconded by Counselman Ford. They are requesting a presentation on this particular item. So what I'm going to do for the sake of, I'm going to designate 10 minutes per side, 10 minutes for opposition, and 10 minutes for the applicant. So therefore, we'll try to fit as many constituents in those that are opposing. So, Counselman Collette.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we go into presentation mode, could staff be kind enough to explain how this is an appeal of a ruling? So, yeah, what is exactly being appealed and how our votes are, what a yes vote means, what a no vote means?
Let's, let's get the explanation to that towards the end, once we get ready to vote on the item, on the appeal.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the one who's.
If you want to point information, that's fine.
Yeah, and, and, because I want to know what I'm looking at, exactly what got rejected or approved that's being appealed.
Okay, fair enough. Because I, I'm quite sure that same question will come back up, Counselman Morrison, once we get ready to vote.
I, I'm sure it will, but I'm just, while I watch the presentation, I want to kind of set my mind on what we're talking about.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
Josh White at Office of Planning and Development. Although the term applicant and opposition is typically the case for our hearings, this is an appeal of a land use control board decision. So let's divorce ourselves from the terms applicant and opposition. We have an appellant. The appellants are the neighbors appealing an approval of a subdivision by the land use control board, and the appellee was the applicant at the land use control board. This was approved, two lot subdivision, by a six to four vote, so the neighbors are now appealing it as appellants before you. So a yes vote would be in favor of the opposition.
So council members, are you clear? All right, we'll go back over it before we vote. So, we are ready for our presentation.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the council. Stacy Tillman, Office of Planning and Development, for the record. This is a proposal to re-subdivide a half-acre lot. The subject site is located on East Irwin. This case was heard by the land use control board on May 10. Office of Planning and Development recommended approval. The land use control board concurred with that decision and approved this subdivision, or re-subdivision, by a vote of six to four. Again, this is a re-subdivision. This is part of Lot 22. The lot is located within the Irwin subdivision. The lot is currently zoned residential, single-family 10. The Office of Planning and Development did notify owners within 500 feet of the subject site. We did receive numerous emails, telephone calls, as well as a letter of support. The map before you is just simply showing you the 500-foot radius of the subject site, highlighted in yellow. The image before you is the original East Irwin subdivision plaque. The subject property is highlighted in yellow, and the subject site would actually be the southern portion of that highlighted parcel. It would be as a portion of Lot 22. This subdivision, the East Irwin subdivision, was recorded in 1945. So before you is simply the original plaque for the Irwin subdivision. The subject property is located where my cursor is, the southern portion of Lot 22. This lot, Lot 22, has previously been subdivided. The applicant or the appellant would like to re-subdivide Lot 22. Again, the site is zoned residential 10. The applicant would like to create a standard subdivision and create single-family dwellings, conventional single-family dwellings. With the R-10 district, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. The minimum lot width is 60. You have front setbacks without an alley of 20 feet. You have rear setback of 20 feet, and your interior side setback are, are five feet. Slide before you is simply the site plan. Again, the applicant is choosing to subdivide this .54 acre lot into two lots. Lots one and two will have area of approximately 11,600 square feet each. Each lot will have a width of 75 feet and will be set 50 feet from East Irwin Drive. As you can see from the site plan, the setback to the rear would be 20 feet, and the applicant has chosen to preserve as many trees as possible, as you can see by the landscaping appearing on the site plan. As I mentioned, the Office of Planning and Development did notify residents within 500 feet of this subject property. In receiving emails, letters, and telephone calls, we summarized those concerns into three main areas. One was residential compatibility. We noticed that there was a concern about property values, and then we also noticed that there were concerns about tree preservation. With regard to residential compatibility, I'd like to, if I could, just touch on those three items. First, I would like to discuss the residential compatibility component of our review, and that was basically an analysis that dealt with looking at what this subdivision, what would be unique about this subdivision, whether or not it would either blend in with the character of the neighborhood, or would there be some type of adverse effect? So, in looking at this residential corridor here, at Princeton being at the north and intersecting with Irwin, if you've noticed with this red circle, the subject property is at the bottom of this red circle. To the immediate north of the subject site are three lots. These lots were previously subdivided with a planned development, which was approved by this body in 2006, creating three residential lots. Now, the subdivision for this three lots, this three-lot subdivision, in staff's opinion, established its own character, but how this, this character, in staff's opinion, does not detract from the East Irwin character. What you'll be able to see from the image above of the aerial is that these lots are set back approximately 50 feet on Irwin and 40 feet from Princeton. They would in fact mirror the proposed subdivision just to the south. And so, within this circle, would be in a sense, a character development of this planned development to the north, which entails three lots and the proposed two-lot subdivision. All of these lots on East Irwin will be approximately 50 feet off East Irwin. The slide before you is simply the planned development that I mentioned. PD-06340 was a re-subdivision of part of Lot 22. Going back to the vicinity map that I showed you, Lot 22 was subdivided to create that northern planned development of three lots. The subject property is, is seeking to subdivide the southern portion of Lot 22. So what you've had in 2006 was a previous request approved by this board to subdivide Lot 22. Three lots were already created, construction has commenced. The applicant is seeking to come in and subdivide the remaining portion of this lot into two lots. And so what you will have with Lot 22 would be a character of three plus two lots with 50-foot setbacks from East Irwin. I've mentioned the three things that residents wrote in their letters and, and discussed with us via phone. One of those things were property value. Like I said, residential compatibility was the other, and tree preservation. For the sake of analysis, staff conducted a property value analysis of properties along East Irwin. The median value of those properties was assessed at 3,350. The lot immediately to the north of this subject site has been appraised in 2018 at $346,100. And as you can see from the list of values, none of these values are below $200,000. So in conclusion, Chairman and members of the council, our staff does recognize that the width and front setbacks of the proposed two lots are not exactly comparable to the existing lots to the south, the existing lots to the east, but this fact is weighed against the width of the planned development that was approved by this body in 2006, the Irwin planned development. In staff's opinion, this proposed development does meet the major preliminary plan review submitted requirements as required in section, in subsection 9.79. And the proposed major preliminary plat review for two conventional homes within this subdivision would not adversely affect adjacent properties, and we feel, Chairman and members of the council, that the development would in fact be in character with other developments for single-family homes within this area. Staff does recommend approval. The land use control board did concur with that decision. That approval does come with conditions, one through 10, as you can see from your slide. Lots one and two, again, will have a 75 feet of width along the East Irwin front. The front setback from East Irwin would be 50 feet. Rear setbacks will conform to the single-family R-10 district. The maximum height will be governed as well by the R-10 district. We also have a condition about garages, that they be placed to the rear of the principal structure. And there are several other conditions that I won't read, but they are included in the staff report, and I can discuss them if there are questions. That does, Chairman, conclude my presentation, and I can entertain any questions if you have some.
All right. With that, we have our applicant present. We're going to do 10 minutes.
Be close. I have a PowerPoint slide two. Please restate your name and address for the record, anyone who wishes to speak, just to make sure we get it on the record.
Yes, sir. Tim Williams. I live at 406 East Irwin Drive, four lots south of the subject property. I'm a longtime homeowner and taxpayer in this neighborhood, and I oppose this unnecessary subdivision. Please stand and be recognized, my neighbors who are here in opposition to this. I represent a group of homeowners that live within the neighborhood surrounding the subject property, who all oppose this subdivision because it sets an undesirable precedent for developers to repeat in my neighborhood, because it's not contextually sensitive to the street character of our established neighborhood, and its sole purpose is purely for the developer's financial gain. To be clear, my neighbors and I have supported many new infill projects, like the one across the street from me. Next slide. Next slide. The one across the street from me at 421 East Irwin Drive, built in 2015, as well as 25 other infill developments in my neighborhood on existing lots that required no subdivision. Would you go back one, please? Back one. Ladies and gentlemen, please remember that even if you vote to reject this subdivision today, a new infill home will be constructed on this lot to replace the old one, and we all will win here. When you put it in those terms, you may be asking yourself, what is the purpose of this subdivision? And the city, the city of Memphis is still gaining infill by rejecting this subdivision. We acknowledge that the site plan conforms to the R-10 zoning requirements. What we have issue is that this subdivision was not evaluated against the strict application of the mandatory contextual infill standards contained in the UDC, which would have resulted in a rejection. Today, I'll present to you substantial and material evidence to support our request to reject this subdivision. First, the proposed subdivision fails to meet the minimum standards as required in the UDC by Part 392, Parts D and E. This section defines the contextual infill standards. Next slide. On the screen is the visual aid from OPD to help applicants determine if these standards apply. Is your property within the gray area of this map? Yes. Does your property contain front setbacks on its plaque? No. Next slide. Does your parcel contain two or more acres? No. And is your parcel on, or development proposal across the street or rebutted by lots platted before 1950 on two or more sides? Yes, it is. Then according to this document, you must adhere to the contextual infill standards. Now, next slide. The actual language from the standard regarding applicability reads, "The contextual infill development standard shall be used on any residential site, meeting the following conditions." Emphasis on the word shall. Per the definitions of the UDC, the words shall and must are mandatory, not permissive or discretionary, but mandatory. With these four specific conditions being met, we argue that the contextual infill standards apply to this property, and when applied, the subdivision should be rejected. More specifically, the subdivision fails the mathematical formula for minimum lot width as set forth in the foregoing section. Applicant proposes 75-foot lots, where the required formula yields a minimum width of 93 feet. Also, the proposed front setbacks of 50 feet from the right-of-way do not fall within the range of front setbacks on our street. Now, there are no specific references to, nor specific discussion of these applicable and mandatory standards in the OPD staff report, or the verbal brief by the land planner, or the deliberations of the land use control board. Therefore, they deliberated and ruled on this matter with incomplete information and insufficient due process for this applicable and mandatory provision. A nearly identical set of circumstances played out a few years ago in the John Wills-Bell Mead re-subdivision case. In that case, the landowner applied for a subdivision. Both the land use control board and the city council voted to reject that proposed subdivision. The case ultimately was heard by the Tennessee Court of Appeals, who ruled that the city council must consider the strict application of the contextual infill standards when evaluating and ruling on his case. And should those standards apply to his case, the subdivision must be rejected. In the appeal phase of that case, the appellate court stated that one of the primary goals of statutory construction is to give effect to the intent of the legislature. The very goal of creating contextual infill standards is to preserve neighborhoods such as mine from infill developments with incompatible street character. After the Wills case, a technical amendment to the UDC was passed, offering developers an option to waive these standards. This developer did not apply for a waiver. Next slide. Here's a copy of Page 2 of their application that clearly shows a waiver from these standards was declined by the applicant. Furthermore, at the land use control board meeting, there was never a discussion of or mention of a waiver by OPD, land use control board, or the developers represented. Now, was a discretionary waiver granted to this developer? There's nothing in the record to reflect the granting of a waiver. If a discretionary waiver is given for mandatory standards, shouldn't there be something in the record to indicate or reflect that? There is not in this case. Is it permissible to grant an unsolicited discretionary waiver from mandatory standards without due process, notwithstanding that the applicant did not explicitly request a waiver, rather declined it in writing on their application? This scenario would clearly violate the UDC section that requires conformance to all applicable provisions and requirements of the UDC. Has an undue privilege been given to the applicant by granting an unsolicited waiver from these standards? Furthermore, per the UDC, the purpose of a waiver is not based primarily upon financial considerations, which in this case, it clearly is. If a silent waiver was granted, then has sufficient due process been given to my neighborhood by sidestepping the waiver process? A waiver is a request which must be granted following due process. As we've shown, the application for this subdivision explicitly declined any waiver, therefore the developer was given an unsolicited warranted privilege by not following the waiver process, and received approval by one vote for this subdivision. This is not a case where the developer will suffer from any extraordinary hardships or practical difficulties as stated in the UDC, should you reject this subdivision. Instead, he'll build one new infill home in place of the existing one home, and we all win. Now, has any proof been offered by the developer as to why this subdivision should be approved when it clearly violates the foregoing standards? Should the burden of proof be on the neighbors to show specifically why this subdivision is in violation of the UDC? Shouldn't the developer show cause for the need to subdivide this lot in an established residential neighborhood when a majority of the neighbors oppose it? Now, we're not asking you to rewrite the law, we're just asking you to properly apply Now, we're not asking you to rewrite the law, we're just asking you to properly apply this law and reject this subdivision in favor of one contextually appropriate infill home that the neighborhood can get behind. Now, I'd like to request a remainder of my time be added to my rebuttal period. Thank you.
Madam Controller, please show two minutes forty-two seconds remaining. Are you speaking on behalf, in favor?
Oppose.
Oppose? All right, you have two minutes and forty-two seconds remaining.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm in favor of rejecting this application. Appeal.
Of the appeal. So if you're in favor of opposing it, um, you, you are, you have two minutes and forty-two seconds remaining.
My name is Gina Bennett, live at four four one East Irwin Drive, the property located right next to this proposed subdivision. Um, I'm a lifetime resident of Memphis, Tennessee. This is the third home that I've been a taxpayer of in this community. Um, I moved to this neighborhood because of the character of the wooded lots and the unique homes. I have previously lived in a community on Mud Island and owned a home where I was only ten foot from the next structure. I was close to the street, I had no yard and very little trees. I made the decision to move to a different community for a different lifestyle. If this is approved, and as you continue to say that it's in character with this other subdivision, which is the same developer on the corner, he created his own style that we're trying to adhere to, it's not the, the character of the existing neighborhood, it's the one he created in 2006. Unfortunately, I didn't own a home on that street at that time to oppose it, but I certainly would have. I'm going to be within ten feet of next structure and looking at twenty feet ahead of me and blocking my view of the street and the trees. There's no reason to put two homes on one lot. It's one house, one lot is all we're asking for. It's been done right down the street, and there's no reason to make special exceptions for someone to profit from it who's not a resident of the city, he's not a taxpayer, uh, and he's, he's failed to listen to our concerns via public meeting, informal meeting, emails, uh, there's been absolutely no compliance with any of our requests. And as a homeowner and taxpayer, and my constituents here, we're just asking you to support us and protect our neighborhood. There's no reason to change it. It's not a street that needs to be flipped and renovated, it's a street that is highly desired. Pardon me. Thanks.
All right. Madam Controller, please hold the forty seconds for rebuttal, and now we can have our other side. Mr. Fay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Michael Fay, Prime Development Group, Seventy-Five Twenty Capital Drive. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go through a few panels that'll give you a little bit more information on this property. Obviously, we all, we have a bit of a difference of opinion with the neighbors, but I will tell you, it has been friendly discussions, it has not been, uh, when we have talked, it has been cordial. Ladies and gentlemen, as Stacy said in the original application up on the board, you'll see the Irwin subdivision is recorded in nineteen forty-five. The thing we're talking about right now was one simple lot, that's lot twenty-two. Could we go to the next slide, please? Ladies and gentlemen, since two thousand and eight, there have been all of these developments that you see or changes in that plan since nineteen forty-five. You'll see the Irwin development, which is the lots, the three lots up at the corner. Across the street, you'll see a big box, that was the original lot, that was lot fourteen, that's been cut in half. To the north, you'll see an infill that's come in, and to the left, you'll see three, a three-lot condominium complex that was built. Next slide, please. So we're gonna zoom in a little bit more, and we want you to pay a special attention to the Irwin PD. That's the one that my client finished. He didn't start, he finished that development. Our subject site is the remainder of lot twenty-two. Next slide. Now, I've overlaid in there in green the Irwin PD, that shows you our two lots. The difference that we're seeing in these two particular plans is very simple. When you look to the north, when you see Irwin PD, you will see one thing, you'll see that the lots are actually larger than that development. You'll also see that the lot to the south of this, lot thirteen, is ninety feet deeper. Next slide. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna talk about setbacks at some time tonight, so let's go to the first one. The first setback that was ever put on any of these plans was in nineteen forty-nine, when the corner lot across the street from Irwin PD was put in place. That deed specifically stipulates fifty-foot setbacks on Princeton and Irwin, and that's where the house sits. Next slide. As Stacy showed you earlier, we're looking at infill standards. Officer Planning and Development can deal with the question of the, of the contextual, contextual infill standards. In this particular case, I want to call to your attention a number of items. First, the minimum lot size, ten thousand square feet, we're eleven thousand six hundred. Minimum width, sixty, we're seventy-five. Front yard setback, standards, twenty. We are two and a half times that. Ladies and gentlemen, we ask for no variances, no changes, no modifications of those existing standards. This piece of property, this discussion tonight, is not about zoning. Next slide. Let me go to the next one. Next one. And next one. Ladies and gentlemen, when we look at the existing house that's on the property, this is the house that was demolished, it was built in the fifties. Seventy years old. You can see from the back, it's not doing very well. Next slide. When we compare that house to the houses right next door to it, these are adjoining, it gives you an idea of what the houses look like. Ladies and gentlemen, it's an improvement. What hasn't been brought up tonight is that my client, when he has taken those three corner lots in Irwin PD, each one of those houses was six hundred thousand dollars in value. He's added value to the neighborhood before we got here tonight. Next slide. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, this is what the houses look like from Princeton. This is just a comparison to show the houses on Princeton compared to the house on lot thirteen, which is south of us. Next slide. And again, now we want to show you the difference between our proposed plans of the two new homes and the existing home. Next slide. Ladies and gentlemen, the, the client has had one benefit. There's been two owners who have, who have stepped up to purchase these lots, and these are their actual elevations of the homes they want to build. These aren't fictitious, this isn't a spec, these are two homes that we want to build on that property today. Next slide. So we get to the crux of the matter, ladies and gentlemen, it's very simple. When you go to the north, when you look on the north, you see that box north of the blue line, that is Irwin PD. Irwin PD has a fifty-foot setback from Irwin. When we go to the lot north of that, the lot on the corner, it has a forty-foot setback. So to say that we aren't looking at contextual standards, we are. There's a fifty-foot setback. When we look to the south, ladies and gentlemen, at lot thirteen, that subdivision is so old, there are no regulations on the setback. There are none. The plan that we show you today is a very simple plan that we want you to keep a couple things in mind. First of all, the trees that you see on the plan are the ones we want to save. The tree in the back that you see in the center is a thirty-six-inch oak tree, we want to save that tree, I'm sure the neighbors want to save that tree. The goal in this development is saving those trees, the neighborhood would agree that the, that that's a value. But ladies and gentlemen, we gotta take a step back and take a look at this piece of property. We're looking at a subdivision that was created in the forties. This is two thousand eighteen. There are homes in there that were built in the fifties. Fifties homes don't work anymore today. We have an unusual situation that when you look at our lots, to the lot to the south, the lot to the south of us is ninety feet deeper. Our lot's a hundred and fifty-five feet deep, their lot is two hundred and forty-three feet deep. When you want to look at setbacks and what you can do, they've got a lot more to work with. This is what we're left with. We've got this, we believe that this is a benefit to the neighborhood. We also ask you to keep one thing in mind. If we want people to move into Memphis, are we, and we look at this particular development, these are two six hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. Normally, I'd be bringing, we'd have, if we had an argument about a plan, we would have someone saying, hey, you're building homes that are less value. That's not the case. These homes are twice the value of what OPD said they found the value of the neighborhood to be. And, Ms. Chairman, at that, I will end my presentation. We have one more speaker.
Thank you. We have, um, remaining time of three minutes. Are you taking the rest of his, the three minutes?
I doubt that I'll need that much time, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'll try to squeeze it all in in less than that. Thank you very much. My name is Donald Glaze, I live at three two seven five Hacks Cross Road in Memphis, Tennessee. I represent the West Tennessee Home Builders Association, and I'd like to remind you that Mayor Strickland has adopted a policy of trying to drive infill housing and housing in general back into the city by his actions of what he's done in terms of sewer moratorium in the county. And the reason he's done that is that, that he's interested in seeing more development in the city of, of Memphis. From the developer's point of view, it's almost impossible to be successful building a, a very expensive house on a large lot. The way it works, and those, those of you that are builders on this board will know that you price the house as a multiple of the value of the lot. So when you have a very expensive lot, you have to build a very expensive house in order to get the value of the lot back when you sell. Today, it's virtually impossible to get appraisals on houses that are built on large lots, unless they're in a subdivision that is exclusively estate lots. What we see here is a, a development request that is consistent with what we see to the north of this subject property. So in order to justify the final sale price, a builder has to construct a home that is several times more than the cost of the lot. The problem with that in, in established areas like this is that the homeowners, the consumers cannot get mortgages, um, that would justify the, cannot get appraisals that would justify the mortgage. So it's an appraisal issue, it's a federal issue, based on the appraisal guidelines of the federal government and the banking regulations. Sadly, for a variety of reasons, Memphians who, who work in this area, and, um, people who live outside of this area are turning more to the surrounding counties like DeSoto County, Marshall County, Fayette County, Tipton County. Sadly, for the first time in two thousand and fifteen, DeSoto County had more housing starts than Shelby County had. We had at one point in two thousand and eight, four thousand plus housing starts. We struggled to make nine hundred. That's a huge burden on the taxpayers that are left here in Memphis, and a subdivision like this and the, um, the benefits to the, to the taxpayers of this subdivision are enormous. In conclusion, I'll say this, um, there have been economic studies done across this nation, including in Shelby County and Memphis, that show that for every housing start, three point nine permanent positions are established. In other words, if you build a thousand houses, you're, you're employing almost four thousand people. We need more housing starts in Memphis. What we don't need is more roadblocks to development. I appreciate your time, thank you.
All right, you guys have thirty sec, well, nineteen seconds remaining on the fore side, um, and you guys have only thirty seconds remaining. So if you can fit it in in nineteen seconds, go ahead and give it a shot.
Uh, my name is Dr. Sean McCarty, I live at forty-six twenty-five Princeton Road here in Memphis. Uh, it's the top of that plat that we're talking about, one of those new houses that you saw. My time? So, uh, I was recruited here, um, from the Cleveland Clinic last year, uh, my wife and I are from Chicago, and, uh, we just hired, I'm a transplant surgeon at Baptist, um, I have to live seven to eight minutes from the hospital. I just hired people from Texas Heart Institute and from the Cleveland Clinic to come work at this institute as well. If I don't have places for these people to live, we can't move to Memphis. I just want to be clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no outbursts in the chambers. Another outburst, we will escort you out. Thank you. All right. At that, I will go ahead and move with the council members, we do have council members in the queue. You want to use your thirty seconds? Go ahead, sir.
My name's Clay Scott, forty-eight oh nine Normandy Lane. They got a little more time, so I'm hoping I get a little more than thirty seconds. I want to thank my neighbors who took off work to be here. Also, understand there's some builders and real estate agents that are in here for the other side, so welcome to you guys. I just want to say one thing, Mr. Fay, he did not mention contextual infill standards. And guys, these standards were written for exactly this situation, when a builder comes into an established neighborhood and takes a property under two acres, in this case, a half-acre property, and tries to split it in half. We have no problem with infills, there have been twenty-six homes built in our neighborhood, anywhere from a half million to a million dollars price in our neighborhood in the last four years. The market will absolutely support this. This is about money for the builder, he wants to spread his lot cost, uh, over two houses, get two builder fees and two real estate fees to sell the houses, that's all it is. And this is why the contextual infill standards were written. It's in the UDC, we're only asking you to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council members, we're now coming to you. All right. Mr. Morgan, I'll let you go before me, sir, so you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you to everybody that came down here today. I know it's not always easiest to, to find parking or get time off work, and typically, I'm in favor of investment and infill in the city of Memphis, uh, but in this case, I will be voting, uh, with Mr. Williams and Mr. Scott and the neighbors represented over there. I just want to be clear again that we're talking about, that is a yes vote, so I will be voting yes, which is in favor of the, yes, the, the appeal, um, as a no, and a no vote would be in favor of the developers and whatever the language was used. Um, and it's, it really comes down, we've had a number of these cases just in, I guess, in the last two and a half years, and, you know, there's sometimes I've been with neighbors, sometimes I've been with the developers, uh, and they had two arguments that really hit home for me, and one was the, the character of the neighborhood and the fear of the domino effect, which I think is very real in this circumstance, uh, that it won't just stop with this, uh, subdivision. So when you look at their street, this is not on Perkins, this is not sitting on Mendenhall, which is a case that we voted on, I believe, about two years ago, uh, or Poplar or Goodlett. This is really a neighborhood street, and the only reason to come onto that street is if you're living on that street or visiting a house on that street. Uh, it has a very different character. Uh, I was driving around, taking several laps, and it just, uh, this development to me, for a number of reasons, just didn't pass the eye test. You don't look at this neighborhood and say, this is ripe for infill. And I know the mayor has a plan, uh, for infill, uh, in the city, and for the most part, I agree with the mayor and I agree with that plan, but the mayor also has a voting record that says not all infill is good infill. Um, and we have to be selective about where we choose, uh, to subdivide these lots, and in this case, I think, you know, the neighbors do have a say. Uh, it is important for them to come down and voice their opinion, and I've been, uh, as impressed with Mr. Scott and Mr. Williams as, as neighborhood representatives as I have been in any of the cases that I've seen, just in the way I think they've handled it. I think there was an honest effort on both sides to find a compromise. Um, they came to an impasse, uh, over setbacks, and, you know, I, I think that's, I think it's unfortunate they weren't able to reach an agreement, but here we are with a decision in front of us, and I, I, I'm in favor of their arguments, I will be voting yes on this, and, uh, but I do appreciate the effort and looking forward to a little bit more discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, all right, thank you, Ms. Morgan. I will just say two things, I'm kind of indifferent, uh, I'm, I'm on the fence, because one thing I look at is, um, it's all about tax-based creation, tax-based retention, and tax-based development for me. Um, the unfortunate piece that we're going to look at is the fact that the only thing that we can possibly do in the city of Memphis to get additional revenue is increase taxes. But when we say increase taxes, that always brings about an argument, because I feel personally, a lot of our residents, especially those who lives in, in my district, they're overtaxed. So when you have opportunities like communities that are, are nice neighborhoods, communities where people desire to live, um, and have the character of building new homes, I think it's a positive for the city to have infill redevelopment opportunities. The couple, couple things that I'm, I'm, I'm in a dilemma about is the fact that these lots that, that are being proposed are both lots that, that are being proposed are both RS10s, which are over 10,000 square feet. They're, the depth of the lot is consistent with the existing lot that's within the neighborhood. And the one thing that's really unique about infill development projects that I've noticed, the property value, the, the overall appraisals in the community increase. So it, it brings in additional opportunities for individuals who want to move back into the city of Memphis. It gives them options because one thing that I've noticed, there's been more people wanting to move into the city of Memphis, but there's a limited amount of stock or housing options for them to move to. So I, I will just say, I would love to hear some more of my colleagues' dialogue on this. But as it stands, I mean, I think, and I, I drove this Saturday just to look around and kind of see, because I received many of your, your emails in opposition to this. So I did read those and, um, I, I just, I wanted to drive it, even though it's not my district, but I wanted to see exactly what it was that we were debating. And so it's a nice neighborhood, and I see why it's desirable for a developer to want to build in that community. But I just look forward to some of my other colleagues' dialogue, but I'm really on the fence about this, uh, application. We'll go to, uh, Councilwoman Fully Love.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Fahey, uh, did you not say that the two lots that you had, they would be divided into two lots? I mean, four lots, I mean, two lots and four, and two lots?
No, ma'am, it's one lot and it would be divided into two.
One lot, okay, and two lots. That's right. Now, what would happen if you decided to build a thousand, I mean, a twelve, hundred, you know, not a hundred, a $12,000 home on that, on that property? Not, not 12,000, but, um, a million-dollar home on that property?
Well, Madam Chairman, I mean, and Fully Love, the, the problem that you have, as was stated earlier, is that the average value in the neighborhood is 300,000. There is one house that's about 500, but now you're saying build a million-dollar house in the neighborhood, it won't appraise. It, it would, it, it'd be insane to do something like that.
Okay, so you decided to build two on that property, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Divide that property. Now, you talked about a five-foot, uh, whatever it was, and another foot, another five-foot or something. What, what is that all about, talking about the, the difference between something?
When we look at the site plan, there's a difference of opinion of the setback. When we look to the north, the existing new development to the north has a 50-foot front yard setback.
Okay.
The development to the south of us does not have a mandated setback, but the house sits 64 feet back. And we, because our lots are only 155 feet deep versus the house to the south of us that is 243 feet deep, we don't have enough space to be able to fit a house in there and have a backyard. It's just that simple. So what we did was in our application, all, we took that lot, broke it up, and as I said earlier, we meet all the RTAN requirements. Office of Playing Development covered that. We meet all those regulations that are needed to do that for a straight subdivision. Unfortunately, we've just had opposition to that design.
Okay, one, one, one final question. You, you, you brought up a home that was near that house that had been demolished, right? That was near the other homes that were in that, uh, area?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Fully Love. Councilman Conrad, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate all the neighbors who have mobilized and let your thoughts be known and come down to City Hall today and to the, uh, to the team that wants to build the houses. Appreciate your interest in that. We do need more infill development. Hopefully, maybe there's a common ground here. I know there've been a lot of discussions around it and thought there might be a solution before the meeting, but didn't get there. But I have a couple of questions. Mr. Fahey, or maybe your client, or both. So you said these houses are 44 and 3,900 square feet, is that right?
About, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, how much on the ground floor?
That is the ground floor.
I thought, uh, they're both one-story houses?
Each one. There's two different houses?
I thought they were two-story houses. There's just a one-story house?
Well, I think, yes. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, I'm, my name is Lou Corielli. I'm the, uh, the developer, and I'm also the developer of the East Irwin project just to the north. Roughly, those houses are going to be around 24, 2,500 square foot down and the rest is up.
How much?
About 24, 25.
Downstairs, downstairs?
Downstairs, right.
Including the garage?
No, the garage is normally considered as unheated space, so that is not part of the heated square footage.
So 3,000, plenty of room on the ground floor?
Right.
Okay. And what, what is your desired setback on the back? Twenty, and you, you told me 30 earlier?
Well, right now, we're at, no.
Mr. Kemp, I think the issue that we're running into is that the front yard setback pushes the house back. The rear yard setback really isn't, isn't at a topic.
Well, it, it isn't, it, it is because we're making the decision on it, so.
Right now, it's 20 as per the regulation.
What do you want?
We would prefer that it be 50-foot front yard setback and leave the 20 as.
I know what you want on the front. What do you want on the back?
20.
Okay, I thought earlier you said that wasn't big enough, you needed more.
Let, let me rephrase. We're, we're talking about the setback, and when we were talking earlier, is the rear of the house. The rear of the house would be 30 feet off of the back.
Okay.
And that would save the 36-inch oak tree that we had talked about.
All right, so 30 feet on the back. All right, let me make sure that this math works here. So let's take, I guess one issue is one house versus two, and I know the neighbors ideally want one house, and it seemed like there was some, uh, you know, desire to work with you guys on two if the setbacks were okay. And I'd like to ask the neighbor that, those questions in a minute, but if we had a, let's just say you got the 70-foot setback. And 30-foot setback on the back, all right, and then you've got 156 feet in length, correct? So that's 56 feet times 65. That gives you 3,600 square feet on the ground floor. Buildable. And you told me you only needed 3,000, and so you take out 500 feet for a garage, you still have almost 150 feet to spare. Is that right?
Yes, sir. I think, Mr. Kemp, the issue is.
It's, it's Conrad.
Sorry, Mr. Conrad.
You can call me Kemp, but.
I think the issue, if you'll look at the site plan, that would be putting the setback in the middle of the lot. That would be putting the house 20 feet past back from Miss Stratford to the north, 20 feet back. It would also put us six and a half feet back from the neighbor to the south. It's insane.
Okay, well, the neighbor to the south is 64 and a half feet, right?
Uh, it, we have not measured. We, the only house that the surveyor picked up was 64.
Mr. Whitehead, can you tell me what the house to the south is?
Speaking to, for Mr. Whitehead, we believe the house to the south is 64 feet.
All right, 64?
Yes.
All right. Not 64 and a half, 64?
In that ballpark.
All right. And if y'all want a minute to talk about this, what I would like to propose is, it seems like there's a lot of room to do what you want to do at the price point you want to do it at. It's 70 feet. So I guess for the neighbors, does it need to be 70? Is, if it, what, what if it lines up with the house to the south, which is 64 and a half, and they did two? Y'all want, if y'all want to confer on that. Because I, if, if you guys are good with that, I'd, I'd like to make that as a, as an amendment. Is there anybody that objects up here to a 70-foot setback?
Could you pull up the math? All right, hold on, hold on. Let me, let me do this. Councilman Conrad, hold on, because I have a couple council members, one point of information on your, um.
Okay.
So just, let's go ahead and make that motion, and then I will open it up to allow council members to speak on the.
I'm going to make it a 70-foot setback. Because frankly, I think the neighbors were willing to do something much better for the builder, and it was rejected based on false math, based on what I've heard just now. So if you guys have better numbers and you want to educate us on it, let us know, but what you've said earlier did not mesh with what you just told us up here.
So.
So if you want to explain why, we'd love to hear it, but it was either dishonest or wrong.
So here's the thing, that's your.
Hold on, I just, do y'all want to respond? And, and if I'm off, let me know, but the math, that math seems to work.
Hold on, hold on, Councilman Conrad. Parliamentary procedures, I have an objection to your motion. We need to get the motion on the floor so we can discuss the motion. All right, so his motion is to do a 70-foot setback. It's been moved as second. And Councilwoman Fully Love objected to it, correct? All right, so, so what we need to do is create a special item in order to put this on the floor for discussion. So make this special item number one. All right, council members, this is special item number one. Councilman Colvett, you want to speak on this? It's Councilman Ford's second for discussion purposes. So Councilman Colvett, you're recognized.
Uh, just want to clarify. Councilman Conrad, all right, 70 feet tends to be the average in the neighborhood, but the, the neighbor to the south is 63 or 64 feet, is that correct?
64 and a half feet.
Okay, and the neighbor to the north is how, how far setback?
50.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me tell you, I apologize for what I said. I, I just, I owe you guys an apology.
Councilman Conrad?
I apologize, yes.
All right, Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to hear from Mr. Scott and Mr. Williams in regards to the amendment of the 70-foot setback and how amiable or not that would be to the neighbors that are represented here, if y'all come up and talk to it. Uh, and, and if possible, keep your comments, uh, we, we, we've had a lot of discussion points, but to keep your comments towards just the amendment that we're discussing about the 70-foot setback and, and how that may or may not change y'all's views on, on this development. And if, if you need a moment, I, I understand, we're doing a little bit of an improv game here.
All right, Councilman Morgan, who you want to have a comment from?
Uh, either Mr. Williams or Mr. Scott, who spoke earlier, uh, from the neighborhood just in regards to, I mean, it's, it's tough for them to have a meeting here. I mean, we, there have been negotiations and meetings about this, um, over the last weeks and even month. And, uh, just to give them a moment to confer since they're trying to speak for many voices, rather than having everybody come for, uh, come forward.
After speaking with my neighbors about the 70-foot setback, what, what the neighbors on either side prefer would be a front setback matching their setback of 64 and a half feet, but a greater space on the side setback. We, we would concede 65 and a half, but if we could set it back more on the side to have more space between the homes on the side setback. We still think on some level, the two houses is too much.
Okay, and, and what is it currently on the side? Well, what's the number that it currently is in, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to say what would be comfortable at the moment, but what is, what is the current number as, as proposed?
Side yard setbacks are at five feet.
That's what they are proposed.
That's what they're currently proposed, okay.
The, the current setback way exceeds that, but a greater setback than five feet would be ideal.
So part of my concern, your council members, and, and I, I'm not looking at the same math that Councilman Conrad has. He's, he's got calculations in front of him that I haven't done, um, is just the size of this property. And the reason there wasn't a compromise reached before today is because, um, what the developer wants to do versus what the neighborhood wants to preserve, and then you put this property in the middle, and it, it's just too difficult to have, uh, the two visions, uh, match. And that it may, we, you know, there may actually just be an impasse here. Uh, I'm not, I'm not certain of that. Mr. Conrad, I'd like to maybe hear more from you or from the developers concerning the five-foot setback on the side. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other members.
Well, yeah, no, no, I was asking, I was asking for information.
Oh, I thought you asked me, I'm sorry.
You, you and, uh, Mr. Fahey, just, uh, if they're willing to move on that five-foot side setback as well, or if, or if the numbers are there where that's even a possibility.
Can I respond, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So if we did a 60-foot setback to the southernmost lot, which is what we were kind of contemplating before, can you pull up the site plan, please? All right, so Lot 2 right now, the lot south of Lot 2 is 64 and a half feet. If we went to 60 feet in Lot 2, then 55 feet on the other lot, and then you've got 50 on the corner, so it would be staggered back. And then the neighbor that I understand to the Lot 2 would be better with 10 feet? Would that feel better to you? 10-foot setback? So if we did a 10-foot setback to the south, yeah, side yard setback, even with 30 feet on the back, which I think the builder told us they needed, and with 60 feet to the front, that still gives you almost 4,000 square feet on the ground floor. You can build a big garage and you still have 3,000 feet. So could we, could I amend my motion so it would be 60 feet in Lot 2 and Lot 1? And that would, uh, or it could be staggered, it doesn't matter to me, maybe the neighbors could weigh in. But then we, you'd have more buffer on that south lot, on the side yard, and it would stagger up. And, um, can we also just make a landscaping requirement on that side yard as well? So there would be some landscaping. And if this passes tonight, before we do the minutes in two weeks, we can add that to the, uh, to the plan.
All right, you done, Councilman Conrad?
I am. Can I give them just a minute to let me know if that's agreeable?
Okay, we have Mr. Fahey at the podium as well, so we'll let Mr. Fahey speak and come back to them. Mr. Fahey?
Mr. Chairman, there are too many moving parts right now. Uh, Kemp's con, Kemp, I mean, Councilman Conrad's questions. What's not shown on the plan is the house to the south is five feet off the property line. There are a lot of things that we need to do. We also, as I said earlier, we have two people who want to be buyers. Can we hold this until we get with them? And who knows, maybe we can come back in three weeks with a better idea.
I, I mean, we're here, the neighbors are here, it took a lot of time. You guys have had a lot of time. You've got all the details, you've got a builder. Uh, I would like to vote on this tonight. We're not going to approve the minutes until two weeks. So, or, our next meeting, which I guess is three weeks, so there'll be time for, for that, but I'd like to hear from the neighbors, I guess. All right, so.
All right, so... After talking with my neighbors, we cannot accept the staggered setback. We would prefer, you know, what we asked for to begin with. We, you know, we tried to negotiate in good faith with the client earlier, and we would prefer to see one house built here.
All right, let me go to Councilman Hedgebeth, come back to you, Councilman Conrad. Councilman Hedgebeth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think a lot of us are having a very tough time deciding what to do on this. I guess what I just heard is there's many different setbacks we can do to make two houses work. I think we're all open to looking at those different setbacks. From, but from what I just heard, is the issue, the neighborhood wants one house? Or do they, is there any common ground in two houses? And I think that's the biggest issue we're debating. Sure. I think we're looking at, is there any common ground on two houses? Or is, if the neighborhood wants one house?
My name is Granero Zapata. I live on 406 Las Cova Drive. For us, the issue of just one home is vital. And the main reason right now why we are requesting this is because we feel that the due process regarding the CLU was not in compliance. If we let this thing happen now, for developers to be granted waivers without even requesting them, then it would send a precedent that is going to affect all of this city. And I don't think it would be fair to your constituents if people just go by there and grant waivers to anyone who just forgot or decided not to request them. And then the entire character of the neighborhood is going to be affected because of that. And I think that's, that's the common, the common ground we are working on. Something is happening here where the due process was not granted to the neighbors, and something unsolicited was granted to the developer. That's, that's the main thing for us here tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Hedgebeth, you still have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I know the applicant wants a hold. I wish I could think there would be common ground here in two weeks. Is there any, is there any common ground that, and you can just nod or yes. Is there any common ground here for two houses? Does a hold help you, hurt you? Or is it, do you want one house? Because I think that's what we're basically voting on, two houses or one house. I mean, just... Do you want one house?
We absolutely want one house. There have been over 25 single-house tear downs in our neighborhood. Like I said, ranging from a half million to a million dollars, even over a million dollars. There's absolutely a market for that. And I'll remind you, the contextual infill standards are written for exactly this situation, where a builder comes into an established neighborhood and tries to take a half-acre lot and split it, and put something that's too big for the pie that's left on it, two homes. The pictures might put up at the home, there's nothing wrong with the homes.
Understand, thank you.
They just don't fit.
Understand, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've been through this a few times. And honestly, originally, I'm in favor of yes, siding with the neighbors. Then I get a little irritated, because five minutes ago, there was room for negotiation and compromise. Now there's not. Always kind of irritates me when that happens. They've asked for a hold to try to work things out. Now all of a sudden, this side has no room for negotiations. I would advise that you might want to be careful that you think it's going to work the way you think it is, but the votes up here aren't what you think they are. Because you flipped. Went from, we want this and this, we'll work for this, to now it's just one house. Unless I heard it incorrectly, Mr. Conrad, there was compromise being worked and we just couldn't reach common ground. But we seemed pretty close to common ground 10 minutes ago. That's what I felt. So I would again, because at this point, I'm now in Mr. Boyd's camp. Now I'm going to start talking about taxes and infill, because I thought we could get to a common place. I have an appellate who has asked for a hold. I have a councilman who's trying to work through it. And you guys should change the rules. Change your stance. So you can shake your head and know all you like, but you did. So I'd be careful on which path you're taking. You might want to have the conversation, because at least then it showed that you tried. And if you can't reach common ground in three weeks, I don't, I don't need anybody to come and speak. If you can't reach common ground in three weeks, we come back here and wrap this up in five minutes. But if you can reach common ground, and I've already talked to you, need to be some leaning and bending. He knows he's got to give. You guys have to meet him somewhere. If you come back with, it's one house and that's all it is, then we'll make a decision based on the merits of what we've heard. But it does influence my vote when people don't want to talk to each other. And right now, you're the ones that don't want to talk to anybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Morrison. Let's go back to Councilman Conrad.
Quick question for Mr. Whitehead. Could this be a, oh, I'm sorry, the appropriate party there on your team, but could this be a PD or?
Josh Whitehead, Office of Planning and Development. This, this could be a PD. It doesn't need to be a PD. The key difference between subdivisions and PDs, plan developments, are lot size. Because this has the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size, it didn't need to go to the PD status.
Okay, but that could be an option if we can't sort it out the way we're going?
True, but you can do anything, you can condition a subdivision, just like you can condition a PD.
Okay, all right. First of all, I want to withdraw my motion, and I want to propose a hold to our next meeting. I again want to apologize for losing my temper and for what I said. I did not mean that. But I am, I was frustrated because the numbers that I heard and what you needed to make the thing work, it seems that there's plenty of room to make it work within a reasonable setback. So that's why I'm frustrated, because if we don't have it today and the talks with the neighbors, I don't know how it would have got worked out, and that's probably why we're here. So, but please accept my apology. I'll have to look. I was hoping, I don't have an issue with two houses, but I definitely want to hear more from the neighbors if this passes over the next couple of weeks. I know that the builder team, I'd like just to look at the data of the appraisals and kind of what I heard here. I understand y'all want one house. So I hope that we can come back in a couple of weeks if this motion passes and get an agreement. But I think that what was proposed was a very, very reasonable compromise in terms of two houses with staggered setbacks, and we took care of, you know, the person to the south that wanted more room. So that, that seemed reasonable to me, and I got to think all my colleagues thought that was reasonable too, hopefully, or at least the majority of them. So with that, I would like to propose a hold to the next meeting, three weeks.
You know, Councilman Conrad, out of respect for our colleagues, I do have several that jumped in the queue.
Sure.
That patiently waited to want to speak on this item.
Should I withdraw the hold or bring it back, or?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, so for now, I'll withdraw the compromise.
Okay.
And...
And we'll just, we'll just go through the queue. We still have the hold on there, and we'll recognize Councilman Morgan now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in regard to what Councilman Morrison said, you know, this is not the first time that these two groups have come in contact and been on the other side and had an exchange of words. This has been an ongoing issue. We've, we've been having the emails for a while, they've had discussions. There was a lot that was put on the table, and then ultimately came to an impasse on Friday before coming to us. And I think even since then, they were having discussions before this meeting. So I think the reason you, there wasn't necessarily a change, but I think the neighborhood and the neighbors over there are at a disadvantage, because, you know, we look over there and there are about 20 of them, and there are probably some that would be okay with one house, and there are probably some that would be okay with having two houses. But the safest position, you know, it's difficult to get a consensus and then come forward as, as we're changing and moving the lines in the middle of the discussion, where the developers and the, and the builders are able to speak with one voice versus trying to find an answer from 20. So if there's any confusion, you know, I think I would, I would probably chalk it up to that, and that this is not a process, although we do this every two weeks, this is not a process that they go through every two weeks. So I give them a little bit of leniency there, because in the past few weeks, from what I, the discussions I've had with them and from developers, it has seemed like good faith negotiations. As far as the hold, if it's the will of the council to hold this for three weeks, I'll continue to work on this, and it sounds like others will too, and we keep talking and have the discussions open. I'm afraid, I hope I'm wrong, but I'm afraid we're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole on this site by putting two houses there. And it just, the reason we're, again, having this debate is because it didn't work out, and they've tried, and I don't want this to be a continual exercise where we've had a debate for an hour now and push it off just with those. I, I don't think it will. We haven't had a case like this in probably a year or so. So those are my thoughts at the moment. I'm open-minded to the hold. I do appreciate the neighbors and the difficulty it is to get down here. But if it's one last chance effort at coming to a negotiated settlement, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. I will be brief. I just think it's something that I will support the hold that Councilman Conrad proposed. I will just say this is something in a moment that we as council members need to take a real hard look at and define what we are going to be or become as a city. When your city starts to grow, these are the heartaches that we have to deal with. The one thing that we need is more infill development opportunities throughout the city of Memphis. And it's very unfortunate, I mean, we're dealing with these historic districts, we're dealing with, all these, these communities want to become historic districts, but if you look at the history of what happens to areas that's beyond historic districts, property values increase, neighborhoods become more vibrant and successful, and it creates opportunity. Because what happens is, we are about to limit ourselves as a city of Memphis to push more people moving into the city of Memphis, into the suburbs, because we don't have adequate stock for individuals wanting to come. If you look at downtown, roughly over 30,000 downtown residents living in downtown Memphis now, with the mixture of housing and apartments and condominiums, that shows that people are interested in relocating and living within the city of Memphis. And I just want us to start thinking about that from a standpoint, when you say, we need additional money for police, we need additional money for fire, we need additional money for employees, when we have these debates, when we're dealing with sanitation issues, when we have these debates, think about how we pay our bills in the city of Memphis. It's all ad valorem taxes. We don't have a state income tax. We get the majority of our money from ad valorem taxes. And the one thing that we've noticed in the city of Memphis, we have not seen growth since the 60s. The city of Memphis hasn't grown since 1968. Something's wrong with that picture. And if we have an opportunity to see growth in our community, in our neighborhood, we need to do everything we can to encourage it. That's all I have. Councilwoman Robinson, you're recognized. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I support us holding off on making a decision this evening, because I have a couple of questions. And in looking at this, I need the council people to be able to share with me at our next meeting when we actually talk about this item again. Based on the conversation that I heard tonight, I am not just a councilperson, I represent a community, as the president of my community association. And it's so important for us to preserve the, the value of our homes, the community in which we live, but we don't want to give up on any progress in our community. What I heard the community say is that I'm afraid that my community is about to change. And I don't understand the negative side of their community changing, because that was not expressed tonight, and I need to understand that. Number two, I also hear in the, heard in the conversation that they wanted more space between houses. I don't think the issue was how far the house sits back from the curb. I think the issue was how much space I have between my house and the next house. And I didn't hear that addressed where I could see it. I heard you all talking about if you move one house to 64 feet and one to 64, 65 and a half, or whatever. I can't visualize that, so it would help me if I had just a little sketch of what that would look like, and how the, how the houses would be separate, because the main issue that I heard the community say is that we don't want to be on top of each other. I think that's what they were saying. But if all of that is clarified, then we could make a decision and help the community and help our city move forward. But what they're saying to us is that they're afraid that their community is going to change. What we're saying, Mr. Chair, is that our communities may change, but that's the purpose of us doing Memphis 3.0, talking to the communities and figuring out what can we do so that people will move back into our communities. And those are the questions that the community needs to be able to come back and share with us. What is the real issue? And how do we resolve it? They can't resolve something when they can't articulate what the real issue is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Robinson. Councilor Wade, we were going to yield to you next, you had mentioned. So I have two other people in the queue, so, but we'll, okay. All right, thank you. So Councilman Conrad, you're recognized, sir.
I guess I'm confused. I thought the, if there was compromise going on, it seems like it's two houses versus one, and so I don't know how you compromise on that. And the setbacks, I thought, got sorted out. So what compromise has been going on here? No, I mean, I think I heard that the, that the setbacks, I mean, I had a discuss, and I know we don't have a neighborhood association, and there are different people, different interests, I understand that, but setbacks are, you know, that could, that's negotiable, I get that. But if they wanted two houses versus one, was there progress made? Yes.
I think there is maybe a division of opinion amongst them. Some of them are wanting one house.
Right.
And some of them do not, they're willing to compromise on the setback, provided you do some side setback adjustments. That's the way I understood what I've heard tonight.
Who wants just one house?
Yes, fine.
Yeah, can I speak, Chairman?
I mean, let's just stick it, if you got a direct question, Councilman, you can direct it to one of them, but let's just kind of stay on task.
No, we've, I think we've, we're, I'll, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Yeah, so Councilwoman Fuller Love?
Thank you.
You're recognized.
Very quickly, we cannot sit up and try to dictate to the developer how he goes to develop. We cannot. I'm not, we cannot do that. And I know we are doing that, all of us are doing that over here, they're doing it over here, they're doing it over there, they're doing it. But we cannot develop, sit up and tell the developer what to develop. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So what we'll do is, that's been all of the council members in the queue. Going to recognize our attorney, Alan Wade, and then what we'll do, we'll come back to Councilman Conrad on his proposed hold. Councilman Conrad on his proposed hold. All right.
Mr. Chairman, with the permission of Councilwoman Fully Love, I will speak. I think there are a couple of points. Councilwoman Fully Love made a point that we can't dictate what the developer develops. This is here on an appeal, and I think the appeal wants you to reject the approval in its entirety. So your options are to reject it in its entirety, which means it will not be redeveloped, or you can reject it with conditions being added as a condition of your rejection, which would encompass a compromise like what Councilman Conrad proposed, meaning that we will reject it, but we reject it on the condition that these things happen. And what I heard Councilman Conrad try to do is somewhat try to reach a compromise. I mean, you have a 70-foot on one side, a 50 on the other, he came pretty much in the middle. So I mean, that's the kind of thing that this body can do. Having heard some of the comments and all of the comments that have been made by the council members, I would suggest to both sides of this controversy that they need to compromise this issue. This needs to be resolved because if it is resolved by this body, I'm not sure it's going to be resolved satisfactorily, either one of you. There are two outcomes that you can have down here, and one is a rejection of your position and another is an acceptance. What I've heard tonight, there is some indication that they want to give some latitude to redevelopment in this area. I may be wrong, and that may not be the way it turns out, but you have to take that into consideration when you decide, am I going to be a hardliner and say, I just want one house? So with that in mind, you know, I would urge the developer and the community to try to come together to reach a compromise. I think it would make everybody's life a lot easier. There was some comment about the contextual infill standards and how the applicant said that it did not want to waiver. These contextual infill standards, I'm not sure that what I'm seeing here says that the contextual infill development standard shall be used. I don't think that's the language anymore, is it?
Josh Whitehead Office of Planning and Development, I believe Mr. Wade is directing me to Section 392 of the Unified Development Code, 392A. The following standards are intended to accommodate the majority of infill development. They have been crafted to allow an applicant to look to the surrounding context for guidance in construction. These standards are intended to encourage reinvestment in existing neighborhoods and reinforce the traditional character of existing residential neighborhoods. They shall be used on any residential site that meets the following, colon, and we went through, or Mr. Williams went through those. At the end of that section, it reads, "The provisions of this section may be waived through the subdivision approval process, provided the determination is made that no substantial harm will be imposed upon the health, safety, welfare of the surrounding neighborhood."
Okay, thank you. And to the extent that that is a technicality that may or may not apply here, this body, if you are inclined to allow the relaxation of those standards and the waiver of those standards, you have the ability to do that. You have the ability also to remand it back to Land Use Control Board to consider a waiver, and if you do, it will come right back here with the waiver issue being squarely on the table. So I don't think that technicality can be relied on faithfully by these applicants because there are ways to ameliorate and correct that problem if they want to insist on that being a condition of your rejection. So I mean, I just want everybody to know that there are a lot of ways to skin a cat. It's preferable that the applicant in the neighborhood skin that cat rather than this body, and that's my advice to them and to you.
Thank you, Attorney Wade. Is there any questions or comments on Attorney Wade's comments? All right, Councilman Conrad, you have the floor again if you want to state your hold.
Just hold it for next meeting.
Without objection? All right, that item will be held until our next meeting, July 10th. All right, Madam Comptroller, after a hearty debate, please call item number seven.
Item number seven is a resolution approving a special use permit located at 164 Union Avenue containing 49 plus a minor's acre site in the sports and entertainment SE district. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is SUP 18-09.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see our applicant is present. May I go ahead and get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Cindy Reeves, SR Consulting, 5909 Shelby Oaks Drive, Suite 200.
Outstanding, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, this is item number seven, case SUP 18-09. Is there any opposition? Item number seven, SUP 1809. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, this case was heard in committee, it did receive a favorable recommendation. We do have staff on hand, should any of our members wish a presentation, but with that, I so move it to the floor.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Colvett, seconded by Councilwoman Robinson. Do see Councilman Ford in the queue. Councilman Ford?
Ms. Reeves, on any special permit to allow a hotel, I always ask these two questions. First of all, is there going to be an hourly rate? And I hope you say no.
No, sir.
And what will the rates be weekly slash daily?
Alexandra Clegg, Magna Hospitality, 300 Centerville Road, Warwick, Rhode Island. Rates will be around between $190 and $220 annually on average.
All right, thank you. That's all I need, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, seeing no members, additional members in the queue, council members, please cast your votes for item number seven.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hitchpeth, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen abstained. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes.
Thank you very much.
Please call item number eight.
Item number eight is a resolution approving a planned development located at 5,000 American Way, west side of American Way Boulevard, plus or minus 1,630 feet south of Mount Morum Road, containing 36.224 acres in the commercial mixed-use dash three use district. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 18-18.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cindy, can I go ahead and get your name and address for the record, please?
Reeves, SR Consulting, 5909 Shelby Oaks Drive, Suite 200.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, this is item number eight, PD 18-18. Is there any opposition? Item eight, PD 1818. No opposition?
No, that's my applicant.
Just checking.
Just wanted you to know he was here.
He stood up, sorry, I just had to check. Do we have any cards, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Thank you very much. This case was heard in committee, it did receive a favorable recommendation. Staff remains on hand to give us a presentation, should any of the members wish it, but with that, I so move it to the floor.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Colvett, seconded by Councilwoman Robinson. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number eight.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hitchpeth, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number nine.
Item number nine is an ordinance rezoning the northwest corner of Shelby Drive and Malone Road containing 12.73 acres in the residential single-family R-8 and commercial mixed-use -1 districts. Up for third and final reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is Z 1806, ordinance number 5693.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Our applicant is present, may I have your name and address for the record?
Cindy Reeves, SR Consulting, 5909 Shelby Oaks Drive, Suite 200.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, this is item number nine, case Z 1806, ordinance 5693. Is there any opposition? Item nine. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, this case was also heard in committee, it did receive a favorable recommendation. Staff remains on hand to give us a presentation, should any of the members wish it, but with that, I so move it to the floor.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Colvett, then seconded by Councilman Ford. All right, requesting a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, Don Jones with the Office of Planning and Development. Subject property is located on the northwest corner of Shelby Drive and Malone Road. It says, "A request to rezone the property from its current single-family residential 8 and commercial mixed-use 1 to employment." Employment is also known as light industrial. Subject property is located in the Capelville area of Memphis. You see on the screen Shelby Drive, also known as State Highway 175. This is Malone as it comes through the property, in somewhat of an S curve. Scrolling down through the staff report and zooming in now on the subject property, this aerial is a couple of years old, it still shows the Capelville School in place on that site. That building has since been razed. You see also in the immediate vicinity, industrial uses mostly of the warehouse and distribution nature. There is a use down to the south with outdoor storage, also industrial uses, industrial zoning. Again, zooming in, same idea of using Google, a little bit better aerial, showing existing And finally, their zoning map, it shows the subject property trimmed out in blue, zoned R8 and CMU 1 at the corner. The R8 was used at that time because there was a school on the site, it was a Shelby County school. So now, given the uses in development in each direction from this subject property, the development of Shelby Drive, which is a median divided four-lane road, we feel like it's appropriate now to consider this change in zoning to the employment zoning district, which again encourages development of an industrial nature, warehousing and distribution are the typical uses in this category. We heard one, we had one email of support for this request. We heard no calls, no emails of opposition. No one appeared at the Land Use Control Board meeting in opposition to this request. It comes before you now with a recommendation of approval from the Office of Planning and Development and the Land Use Control Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. No questions.
All right, seeing no other council members, Councilwoman Robinson, do you have questions? Okay. Seeing no other council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number nine.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hitchpeth, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes.
Thank you very much.
Madam Comptroller, please call our fiscal consent, starting with item 15.
Item number 15 on our regular agenda is a resolution adjusting the FY '18 budget to accept $120 in donations or expenses associated with the city of Memphis's bicentennial celebration. This resolution is sponsored by the administration. On our add-on agenda, item number 41 is a resolution accepting grant funds in the amount of $146,542 from the Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce Development for the statewide dislocated administrative programs. This resolution is sponsored by Workforce Investment Network. Item number 42 is a resolution accepting grant funds in the amount of $81,900 from the State of Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce Development Division for employment services state allotment states. This resolution is sponsored by Workforce Investment Network. Item number 43 is a resolution accepting grant funds in the amount of $1,318,881 from the State of Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce Development Division for WIOA Rapid Response Skills Enhancement Programs and Services. This resolution is sponsored by Workforce Investment Network. Item number 44 is a resolution accepting one MPD RTCC camera compatible with existing MPD equipment to be installed in the Massey Point subdivision at the request of the residents of the Massey Point subdivision who gave the necessary funds. The items are being donated by the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. The cumulative total donation is $11,980. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. Item number 45 is a resolution accepting one MPD RTCC camera compatible with existing MPD equipment to be installed at Burgundy Road and Cherry Road in the Cherry Estates neighborhood at the request of the residents of Cherry Estates who gave the necessary funds. The items are being donated by the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. The cumulative total donation is $5,605. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. Item number 46, resolution accepting two MPD RTCC cameras compatible with existing MPD equipment to be installed at CEG Denver Campus at the request of the Cornerstone Education Group, CEG, who gave the necessary funds. The items are being donated by the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. The cumulative total donation is $13,960. The resolution is sponsored by Police Services. Item number 47, resolution accepting a donation of Parabon Nano Lab Snapshot from Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation to be used by MPD to predict ancestry and physical appearance of a perpetrator from DNA. The donation has an estimate value of $17,062. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. Item number 40...
That's it.
About 49.
Forty-nine.
Item number 49 also is a fiscal consent item. It's a resolution accepting in-kind donation in the value of $90,000 from Good Sports Inc. to receive equipment for youth athletics programming over a two-year period. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Neighborhoods Division. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Councilman Colvett, seconded by Councilman Ford. Seeing no council members in the queue for our fiscal consent, please cast your votes for our fiscal consent agenda.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 48.
Item number 48 is a resolution allocating and appropriating $246,605 in contract construction in CIP, project number PK18104, Orange Mound Community Service Center repairs to complete major maintenance at the Orange Mound Community Service Center Gymnasium and Orange Mound Park. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Neighborhoods Division.
Councilman Canali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
All right, can you move it?
All right, can you move it electronically, please?
Thank you, sir.
All right, this item has been moved by Counselman Canali, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 48.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 50.
Item number 50 is a resolution approving the transfers of $273,000 from FY '18 CIP project number PK18100, Park Services Cover Line, contract construction, and $9,556 from FY '18 CIP project number PK18100, Park Services Cover Line, fixtures, furniture, and equipment, to FY '18 CIP project number PK18103, Park Improvements, miscellaneous paving, contract construction, and to approve and accept the base bid of $171,555, and alternate one of $107,663, with contingency for a total of $282,556 from A&amp;B Construction Company for FY '18 CIP project number PK18103, Park Improvements, Miscellaneous Paving. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Neighborhoods Division.
Counselman Canali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
All right, it's been moved by Counselman Canali, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen. Seeing no council members in the queue, cast your votes for item number 50.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Conrad, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 51.
Item number 51 is a resolution requesting approval to extend and amend the management agreement with Riverfront Development, Inc., now known as Memphis River Parks Partnership, for the management, promotion, and operation of multiple city-owned parks. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Neighborhoods Division.
Counselman Canali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the committee met, and the administration was asking for a 10-year partnership, and we made a motion to make it 13 years. Is that supposed to be in the...
So it's amended. I would love to see a copy of that lease. So will you move it to get it on the floor, Ms. Canali?
Yes.
So, okay. This item has been moved by Counselman Canali, seconded by Counselman Morgan. Attorney Wade, you probably can answer this for me. Are these terms, five-year renewal terms, options, or is it just a 13-year straight?
The agreement says a straight 10-year. I guess it's been being amended to a straight 13.
We amended that.
The committee's recommending 13 straight, I believe.
So... So right now, I'm looking at it. It's, um, hasn't been amended, so it says a 10-year renewal term. Counselwoman Swerengen.
Thank you very kindly. We discussed in the Parks Committee. Attorney Rome enlightened us that the TDZ will last for 13 years, so we made that amendment to last 13 years along with the TDZ.
I mean, I'm, I mean, it's, it's fine. I'm just, I'm indifferent simply because I just don't want to put something in place that a future council could not necessarily, they don't want to vote to support it, it's their option. So that's why I was wondering if it would be renewal terms. I mean, we deal with this with our Liberty Bowl contract. I wish we can get out of tomorrow, but it's a long-term deal, so we're stuck. And I need to talk to you about that as well, Counselman Wade. Hold on, hold on. We're, I'll get in the queue, Councilwoman Fully Love, and I recognize you. And that's just kind of my position on it, but I'm, I'm, I'm cool. Counselman Canali, you're recognized.
Can we get Ms. Coletta to come up and explain the reasons to the full council that she explained to us in committee, the reasons we wanted to extend it from a yearly renewal to a 10-year renewal, and then we adopted a 13-year renewal?
Yes, that's fine.
Carol Coletta, President and CEO of the Memphis River Parks Partnership. Thank you so much. And let me just explain what we talked about earlier today as we attempt to take public funds and leverage them with considerable private funds. Private donors are looking to which organization, who do they look to, to make sure that the money they give is, we do what we say we're going to do at the time that they donate money. And so what we need to do is make sure the term of the management agreement is such that when they invest, they know who they are looking to, to deliver. And so it's our job to deliver on your behalf. And so that is the reason for the term that we requested, 10 years. A number of donors, as, as many of you know, we've talked with you, we compare that to Shelby Farms, which has been an enormously successful project. I think no one argues with the success and the standards that were set there. That's now a 50-year agreement. And so what we're asking for, we were asking for 10, and as the discussion today in committee went to 20, we came back and set it at, I think you set it at 13, to coincide with the, with the term of the TDZ, and which is where some of the, the public funds for the riverfront would come from. That was in your application to the state. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but that was the rationale for the 13 years, Counselman.
Thank you. With, with that being said, thanks for the explanation, but if it's a 13-year agreement with renewal, automatic renewal terms, would that be suitable, Attorney Wade? So if there was a five-year, automatic five-year renewal, my, my, my whole goal is to at least give the council, give this body leverage on a just-in-case. I go back to Liberty Bowl and all these other contracts that we enter into. As a new council, we find ourselves, if we want to make a change in a contract, then you're stuck for 20, 30 years, and you have no autonomy. So if it's, if it's a said agreement and it's drawn out to be in place for 13 years and you break it up with renewal options, or it automatically renews, it just gives us an option as a body, a future body. Not deviating.
Counselman Boyd, can, do you, can I respond?
I was trying to get a response from our legal counsel.
Sure.
And then you're more than welcome to chime in.
Before we do that, we need to clarify what, right now, what you have before you is an extension for an additional 10-year term, which shall include an option to renew for one additional 10-year term. So are we substituting the original extension and the renewal for one 13-year period, or are we talking about a 13-year period with some renewal thereafter or some other period? I don't, I don't understand what it is that we're being asked to do. Secondly, it talks about that unless sooner terminated, and maybe this will address the chairman's question, under what conditions can the contract be terminated? Because we don't have the full contract before us here.
There's nothing that's been changed in the contract that we've had for 17 years other than the term.
I'm sorry, I hadn't memorized the other contract, and that's why I'm asking, what are the provisions upon which it could be terminated? Do you know, or does Mr. Ferris know, or does someone else know?
This is Chairman John Ferris, Chairman of Memphis River Parks Partnership. I don't know exactly what the, the terms are. I know they're default provisions. It was stated today in committee that there was a termination without cause by the city if they chose to do so. Of course, this council cannot fund us any year. Certainly be a huge hammer that the council would have from a year-to-year basis if they don't feel like we're doing a good job. And that would certainly bring us to the table to negotiate whatever we needed to negotiate that y'all would be happy with.
And, and Mr. Ferris, one other thing, what about this, what are we doing? A 13-year straight or 13-year with some renewal?
I don't, I really don't know the answer to that question. It was set up as a 10-year request with a 10-year renewal, and then this happened today. So we would certainly be happy with, you know, a 10-year, leaving that 10 years as a renewal with the 13 years. We'd certainly be very pleased with that if, if the council chose to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think that answered, I think your concern is being stuck with a fixed term for some indefinite period of time. As I understand, we fund them on an annual basis, and any contracts, most contracts that we have are subject to funding. Without funding, they don't do anything. So as Mr. Ferris indicated, you do have complete control over shortening that term if you deem to do so by not funding them. It might be a reasonable compromise to have an initial term of 10 and a renewal term, renewal term of seven, which would then coincide with what your original request was. It just apportions it in a different way. That's just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. I will consider that. Counselwoman Robinson, after you, Councilwoman Fully Love was in the queue, I don't know how she, so Counselman Morgan, if you mind, I put Councilwoman Fully Love back in right before you. So Councilwoman Robinson, you will be recognized. Counselman Morgan, you should, could have stayed in the queue. Yeah, Councilwoman Robinson, you're recognized.
My question has been answered, too.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Fully Love, you're recognized.
Okay, I have one, one final question, just to get understanding. Attorney Ferris, you said the agreement is 10 years or 11 years, or 12 years to 13 years, right? After, with that, can the council come back and look at you and say, you're not doing a good job, we're going to take this away from you?
The council can do that every year. You'll have our contract before you. If you don't think we're doing a good job, we'll renegotiate the whole thing, or you'll get rid of us. So you have total control from a year-to-year basis.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fully Love. Councilwoman Swerengen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know you discussed moving the timeframe to five years. As discussed within the, the committee, donors, it was increased to 13 years, not only to coincide with the TDZs, but the donors also wanted to have a stipulant before giving their donations. If we reduce the timeframe, it may deter them from making the contributions that they were interested in making. So they wanted a stipulant, and we knew that 13 years, and she also shared that it takes, they have three phases that they're working on for the downtown area, and they would, they would like to carry out those phases. We discussed, we know as council people, it takes forever to get contracts. Once you get contracts, we're waiting six or seven months to get things built, and it takes a lot of time. And I know you agree, Councilwoman Robinson, because you've been trying to get the White Heaven Community Center done for three years, and they still haven't touched it.
To restate my position on it, I did not say I wanted to shorten the term. I said it would be a standard 10-year agreement, five, five with an automatic renewal period. Leases are done like that on a regular basis. Management contracts are done like that on a regular basis, where you shorten your term, but your time is still the same. So if you're going to go after, it, it's the same language. Only thing I'm trying to do is provide a provision for a council to come back and at least have an opportunity to look at it, because you share some of the same frustrations as I think the majority of us on this body share when it comes to that management contract we have in place with the Liberty Bowl. It's twofold. One, the riverfront, that's the most valuable property in the city of Memphis. That is our bread and butter, and for the sake of opportunities, just want to make certain that we have the wherewithal as an elected body to make a decision and determination if we see fit. I don't foresee it happening. To state this, I think that Ms. Coletta has the competencies. I think her board definitely have the competencies that we need in place to see our riverfront change. But if the inevitable happens, we have options to protect the city in the case that we feel that this is going down the wrong road. I support the efforts. I support the funding that they're going to be able to secure, but the only thing I am wanting to make sure that we do is at least have an exclusion or, or an option to exclude ourselves or remove ourselves from the contract. And I feel confident now that Attorney Wade has said that since we do have budgetary control over them, that that's, give us some leverage to get out of the contract. I'm just thinking, long-term, beyond my stay here on the council, to not put other councils in a, a pigeonhole where they can't make a decision if they want to renegotiate contracts. That's my position.
And, and we're correct in thinking, in knowing that we can curtail that contract at any time, yearly, if we desire to do so. It sounds like that's what I heard from Attorney Ferris, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're, we're, we won't be like the Liberty Bowl contract.
Right.
In a better stand.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselman Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Coletta. So, how are you today?
Hello.
So what originally was, is now being discussed is a 13-year contract to coincide with the TDC. Is there any negative impact on your fundraising if we went to five-year, 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 whatever it is? Is there a negative impact on the fundraising if that's the language? If we don't do 13, does that negatively impact any fundraising through grants, whatever it is that you're working with?
I appreciate the question. I, I think there is no negative impact if we don't do 13 years. I do believe there's a negative impact, and I've been told by prospective funders there's a negative impact if we don't do 10 years. But, you know, so, you know, I'm conveying to you honestly what fund, funders are telling me. And I think, again, they're looking for, you know, do, you know, are we in full partnership with you as a council, with the city of Memphis, to do this project? It's a big project, and as, and we're asking them to invest big dollars. So they're just looking to make sure, I think there, many of them are using the very successful model that Shelby Farms had. I know that was a county endeavor, but using that model, they started out with 10 years, they gained the confidence, they showed what they could do, they gained the confidence, then they moved that contract now to 50 years. So what we're asking here is 10 years with a 10-year renewal. But as Mr. Ferris said, we, because we come to you with an annual request for funding, that also mean you have financial oversight on this organization and the work we do on the riverfront.
Thank you. And I think that's, be it 10 or 13, and I support 13 years, it makes perfect sense to me for it to be a 13-year contract to coincide with the TDZ. But I don't want to support anything that hinders the funding. Be it five-year, be it 10, one-year agreements wouldn't work, we can shut you down any year we want to. I mean, it's, when you, when you come to the council, if we don't fund you, you're done. So I think whether we call it a 13-year lease, or a 20-year lease, or a 100-year lease or contract, you have one-year renewable every year. That, that's the way I kind of view it. Every year, you're coming back to show us what you've done.
That's right.
And then we can make any tweak to it or change to it, whether, no matter what the term is. So for me, I support the 13-year. Certainly, we're not supporting anything less than 10, because I think we don't want to do anything to stand in front of the private donors, which is what we, as the council, have strived for, for you guys to gain. So, I mean, I support what the committee came up with, with 13 years, because again, to me, it's really just a series of 13, one-year contracts, because we can shut it down any year we want to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. What needs to happen right now is we need that motion stated, because right now, what's technically before us is a document that states, whereas the party's desire to amend the contract to allow for an additional 10-year term, 11th extension, with one-year, 10-year renewal term. So let's get the motion on the floor, stated like it was in committee. Mr. Canali, it was your committee, if you remember the motion, you can make that, sir, on the floor. You have the floor.
Our motion was to extend it to a, an additional 13 years, and I'm guessing that's starting effective July 1st.
Yes.
With 10-year option.
Okay. So I will take your motion as stated. So the contract, it's been seconded by Councilwoman Fully Love, so the contract will read, whereas the party's desire to amend the contract to allow for an additional 13-year term, 11th extension, with one 10-year renewal term. Is that acceptable?
Second.
All right. All right. I see, Council, okay, she jumped out. So, please, council members, cast your votes for item number 51 as amended.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpath, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. And for the record, guys, Ms. Coletta, it has nothing to do with you. I just don't want the city to find themselves in another ridiculous agreement, a management company that runs out of water, that can't provide the city great services that we have with that Liberty Bowl contract. Elevators don't work at Liberty Bowl, and we just have to deal with it. Nothing we could do. So it's nothing personal, it's just trying to make sure we protect city assets, and that's a very important city asset that we have, the riverfront.
It is, and we'll, and we want to be your partner in doing that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Comptroller, please call item number 52.
Item number 52 is a resolution accepting the grant renewal and the amendment of the fiscal year 2018 operating budget revenues and expenditures for this continuum of care program in the amount of $125,885. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development.
Councilman Brown.
Yes, Chairman. Committee met on this item, and it was approved in committee, and I've already motioned it.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Ford.
Same night minutes on this particular item.
Yes, sir, it's in the notes.
The structure of the ad on it.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Ford. Signal council members in the queue, cast your votes for item number 52.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 53. Please call item number 53.
Item number 53 is a resolution accepting the grant renewal and the amendment of the fiscal year 2018 operating budget revenues and expenditures for this continuum of care program in the amount of $213,646. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development.
It was unanimously approved in committee. It passed.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Brown. We have it in the record, Mr. Brown. All the items have it notated. This item been moved by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Signal council members in the queue, cast your votes for item number 53.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hetchpath, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
Item passes. Please call item number 54.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the committee met.
One second, Mr. Brown, got to read into the record.
Beat it in, sir. Thought you was expedient with that.
We wait on the Madam Comptroller.
Item number 54 is a resolution approving the FY 2019 consolidated plan and accepting and appropriating anticipated FY 2019 community development block grant CDBG funds in the amount of $6,586,442. CDBG program income in the amount of $700,000. Home funds in the amount of $3,580,035. Home program income, the amount of $50,000. Emergency solutions grant funds in the amount of $540,655. And housing opportunities for persons with AIDS funds in the amount of $3,547,703 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to the FY 2019 budget for the Division of Housing and Community Development. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. The committee has met on this, on these items, and it was approved in committee, it was unanimously passed in committee. And I'm requesting same night minutes on these, on this particular item, and I'm going to motion for approval.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Hetchpath. Signal council members in the queue, cast your votes for item number 54.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Ford, yes. Hetchpath, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 55.
Item number 55 is a resolution appropriating the sum of $419,735.39, chargeable to and amend the FY 2018 operating budget by appropriating funds to the MHA Low Income Housing Program account. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this item was presented in committee, and it was unanimously approved in committee, and we requesting same night minutes, and I'm so, I so move.
This item was moved by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Signal council members in the queue, cast your votes for item number 55, please.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpath, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please, yes.
For the RDC item, was that supposed to be same night minutes as well?
It is, it is requested same night minutes, it was on there, and it will be.
Yes, thank you.
So their contract could start July 1. All right. Please call item number 56.
Item number 56 is a resolution approving the city of Memphis to purchase, reconstruct, rehab the properties located at 2998 Tillman Cove, Memphis, Tennessee 38112, parcel ID number 04400900017, and 3085STILL, Memphis, Tennessee 38127, parcel ID number 07004200062, pursuant to the resolution adopted by City Council on May 7, 2013, for the HUD Home Entitlement Grant Program. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, sir. This item was presented in committee, and it was unanimously approved, and it's one of, and we're asking, requesting for same night minutes, and this is one of our better projects that we got, especially the one in the Binghamton area. That's one that even the representative of Binghamton over there in District 5, looking forward to, and I think that that's going to be a great improvement, what is going to happen to, over on the, on the Cove, Tillman Cove. So I so move, and same night minutes is request for this item, we're on expedition to get started as soon as we can. Thank you.
All right, this item been moved by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen. Signal council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 56.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hetchpath, yes. Morgan, yes. Mar, Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 57, please.
Item number 57 is a resolution accepting certain routes for parades and races for the months of July, August, and September 2018. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Hetchpath.
Councilman Hetchpath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, and I think we were okay with approving just the routes, the routes of the races for the month of July only, and then we will revisit the August and September routes.
Thank you, Mr. Hetchpath. This item's been moved by Councilman Hetchpath, seconded by Councilman Ford. Signal council. Yes, let's, thank you, Ms. Ford, we do need to amend the caption on this. So, Councilman Ford, Hetchpath, please read the new caption into the record, sir.
Top part of the. Resolution approving certain routes for parades and races for the month of July 2018.
Thank you, sir. So this will be, we will be voting on this item as amended. Madam Comptroller. Did you want to state the caption in the record, Madam Comptroller? It was already read by.
The assistants are making sure we have that caption, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, signal one in the queue, cast your votes for item number 57.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Hetchpath, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 58.
Item number 58 is a resolution appropriating $360,000, chargeable to and amend the FY 2018 operating budget by appropriating funds to the Memphis Healthy Food Financing Initiative. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Ford.
Councilman Ford.
Mr. Chairman, the committee made a consideration, this item was given a positive recommendation. So I'd like to move it on the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. It's been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Hetchpath. I do have two cards, Rashawn Austin and Chakola Harmon. Hey.
Let's see.
You got Chakola? I'm sorry, I butchered your name. You guys come up and speak.
Speaker.
Please state your name and address for the record. You guys get two minutes once you state your name and address.
Rashawn Austin, 3280 Karnes Avenue, 38111. I'm the president and CEO of The Works Incorporated, and I want to briefly say who The Works is. The Works has a mission to rebuild, restore, and renew our communities, families, and the environments in which they live through housing, economic development, providing access and social services. Our work is guided by priorities set by 1,000 unique residents in the South Memphis Revitalization Action Plan, or what we call SOMI-RAP for short. Our area, which includes 38109, 38106, and 38126, has been identified by the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. As a food desert, and I like to define things, so the meaning of a food desert by those agencies is that a majority of our residents live more than a mile from a supermarket and do not have access to transportation. Those things have to exist for it to be a food desert. The Works Incorporated entered the space around food access and security based on clear priorities set by our residents, a theme that crossed over nine priority areas in our plan. Examples of our investment include the operation of the South Memphis Farmers Market for the last nine seasons, the operation of the grocery at the South Memphis Farmers Market, which also supplies the healthy fruit for the city of Memphis out in your, outside of your chambers. We also do cooking education called Cooking Matters, which is a national evidence-based curriculum, and we provided a low-interest loan to an independent operator to provide jobs and food access along the Elvis Presley Corridor in the White Haven area. This project addresses multiple purposes. It helps facilitate access to healthy food options that address the disproportionate health disparities in our community while creating jobs in a very low-income community. Of note, in 2017, Methodist Healthcare Systems provided more than $170 million in services for those who could not pay. The zip code of the proposed first project.
Ms. Chakola? Harmon?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm okay, yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Chakola Harmon, and my address is 2888-1111.
Chola Harmon, and my address is two fifty-three West Frank Avenue.
You can go ahead. Yes.
Okay, so I'm actually a resident of the South Memphis community. I moved over there from Whitehaven, and it is a lot of issues in South Memphis. By them taking the grocery store, it's a little difficult over there for us to get to the store. I'm a mother of eight. Even in April, I couldn't even find a ride to the store to get my daughter a birthday cake due to Kroger being, you know, closed down, and Save-A-Lot was the only store over there. It do bring more jobs for people. A lot of people lost their jobs over there. The transportation is crazy because of the way the buses is made on our streets over there. You can't hardly... It take a long time to even get to a bus stop over there, let alone go to the grocery store. So we need a store over there. That's it.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I do have a couple councilmembers in the queue on item number fifty-eight. Councilman Morgan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What, if any, restrictions will be placed on the loan from the CDC to the grocery store in terms of how it can be spent? Are there any restrictions, or, you know, just a particular purpose that that loan money is set aside for?
This particular first project for the Healthy Food Financing Initiative, the loan is to be used only for point-of-sale equipment, that's cash registers, because Kroger removed all of their equipment because it's proprietary, and the other system they removed was the security system.
Then the other question is for Chief Ford, asked twice earlier, just this three hundred and sixty thousand, I know it came from various parts of the budget and savings from materials and supplies of fiscal year eighteen. Do we have it broken out yet, this three hundred and sixty and the nine hundred and nine thousand from the earlier MHA vote? Locations of that?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Shirley Ford, Chief Financial Officer. Earlier this morning, I... As this was brought into committee, I represented that we had savings, surplus savings across materials and supplies across all divisions. What I would like to bring to you today is I do not have a specific breakdown of each one of those, Councilman Morgan, but just as we, you know, as you're aware, we're in the final weeks of the city's two thousand eighteen fiscal year, and in review of those funds, I just kind of wanted to summarize the following for you. We've discussed in previous meetings that the property tax revenues had receded, had excess of approximately nine million dollars, somewhere right around there, due to the recapture rate changing of three nineteen against our billed rate of three twenty-seven. From that surplus, we have funded initiatives that you have approved, two point five million dollars for solid waste in our increased trash service level initiative, three million dollars for the initial funding of the Universal Needs Pre-K Initiative, and also an additional carryover for commitment toward the actual rarely determined contribution, and today, the nine hundred thousand that you have previously approved in this meeting. And of that, we still have a small surplus that we anticipate, and like I said, we're still finalizing, and there's a lot of spending going on the last two weeks, but we are estimating that we're going to have approximately six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar surplus that we would expend against this ask in front of you currently.
Okay. If we just see the breakdown at some point between the difference of the material and supply savings that we talked about this morning versus just the additional revenues that came in unanticipated?
And also, I would just like to take this opportunity for all of the councilmembers. I know it's a lot of extra work, but just for the approval of the same nine minutes for the items that we have brought for you today, we just want to make sure that all relevant issues related to fiscal FY eighteen is brought for your consideration today, and we certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Councilman Ford, you're recognized.
Ms. Chair, I'd be a credit. Ms. Harmon, thank you for being here and expressing your concern. I don't know if you were one of the several tens and tens of hundreds of individuals that have come to several of the meetings that we've had, whether it was Re-Review, whether it was Old Grove. We've been talking about this for the last four months since that abrupt news, and I appreciate everybody that was involved in this collective effort to make this happen. I will be at the Edge Board meeting tomorrow in support. Ms. Austin, you and I have already had an offline conversation about the wages. I appreciate that the wages have been increased from the average, but hopefully we can increase them a little bit more. I appreciate you letting me know that the gentleman, if that person is picked, is inclined to hire people inside of the district, and I'm talking about your three eight one two six, your three eight one oh six, and your three eight one oh nine. So that's also something that I wanted to go ahead and address one more time that you might not have necessarily addressed right here. So four months of work. I appreciate everybody that was involved from the first study to the last study to all the people that wanted this to happen. So let's make this happen, and requesting same night minutes. Let's get that grocery store aced up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Councilwoman Fully Love, you're recognized.
Rashawn. Just being kind of generic, could you tell us exactly the type of jobs that will be gotten, I guess, by some people in the industry, and tell us basically the kind of salaries they will receive?
Okay. This is a current operator who has an average salary of eleven ninety-eight an hour, and so grocery store jobs range from baggers to cashiers. There will be forty... Approximately forty-two full-time equivalent jobs, and he mostly hires adults, so they're full-time jobs just based on their need. And speaking of the average that he... I compared it to the average in the southeast region.
Or he or she?
So the jobs were referred both he or she. I'm talking about the potential operator when I refer to he.
Okay. Well, what about... What about the general manager?
So there's a manager for the store level?
Right, uh-huh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a store manager, and then there are assistant managers, there are butchers, and so the jobs range significantly because butchers are very well-paid in the grocery business.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman, you're done?
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilman Morgan?
Would draw. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other councilmembers in the queue, please cast your votes for item number fifty-eight.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Morgan abstained. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number fifty-eight. I'm sorry. There was so much debate. You're right. Fifty-nine.
That would take us to our consent agenda.
Starting with item number ten. Yes, ma'am.
Starting with item number ten, ordinance amending chapter nine dash twelve of the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances to adjust the annual stationary sources emissions fee amount and to adjust annual Title V source fees beginning in two thousand eighteen. Up for first reading, ordinance number five six nine six is sponsored by Public Works Division. Item number eleven is an ordinance amending section fifteen dash seven to amend times at which garbage containers may be placed curbside. Up for first reading, ordinance number five six nine seven is sponsored by Councilman Morgan. Item number twelve is an ordinance amending chapter forty-one Code of Ordinances, City of Memphis, to amend section forty-one dash eight stolen vehicle city impound lot. Up for first reading, ordinance number five six nine eight is sponsored by Chairman Boyd. Number thirteen is up for second reading, ordinance number five six nine four is sponsored by the Finance Division. Number fourteen is an zoning ordinance, rezoning zero East Holmes Road, a landlocked parcel, east side of Airways Boulevard, twelve hundred ninety-two feet east of Airways Boulevard and Killarney Avenue intersection, containing twenty point eighteen acres in the residential single-family dash eight R dash eight district. Up for first reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is Z eighteen zero three, ordinance number five six nine five. And on our add-on, item number fifty-nine is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-one of the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances to establish rules and regulations relating to the operation of and regulation of shared use mobility bicycles, electric assist bicycles, and electric scooters. Up for first reading, ordinance number five six nine nine is sponsored by Chairman Boyd, Councilman Canali, Councilman Colvette, Conrad, Ford, Hedgepath, Councilwoman Robinson, and Swearengen. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. That item has been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Hedgepath, seeing no councilmembers in the queue. Please cast your votes for our consent agenda. Chief McGowan, did they turn the air on in here today? We have fans up here, sir. We feel like...
Okay, here's the vote. On our consent agenda, the votes are Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. And Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call our MLGW fiscal consent.
Item number sixteen is a resolution awarding a thirty-six-month purchase order to Memphis Wrecking Company for landfilling the amount of two hundred six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Item number seventeen is a resolution approving change number three to contract number one one seven seven one, generator preventive maintenance and emergency repair with Commons Mid-South LLC in the funded amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Item number eighteen is a resolution approving contract number one one five four one between Memphis Light Gas and Water Division and Texas Gas Transmission LLC in the amount of approximately ten million, two hundred thousand dollars. Item number nineteen is a resolution approving contract number one two zero four six between Memphis Light Gas and Water Division and Texas Gas Transmission LLC. Amount. Item number twenty is a resolution awarding strategic alliance purchase orders to Mitsubishi Electric Power Products, Inc. and Siemens Industry, Inc. for high-voltage power circuit breakers in a combined amount not to exceed eight million, three hundred thousand dollars for a sixty-month period with the option to renew for two additional single-year terms. Item number twenty-one is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Flash Technology for Federal Aviation Administration obstruction lighting in the amount of one hundred forty-seven thousand, thirty-three dollars. Item number twenty-two is a resolution approving the payment of an invoice from the City of Memphis Public Works Department for the annual sewer discharge fee for the two thousand seventeen filter backwash discharged for eight water pumping stations in the amount of three hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. Item number twenty-three is a resolution awarding contract number one two zero one three MLGW water E and O generator maintenance and repair to Commons Incorporated in the funded amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars based on agreed-upon rates. Item number twenty-four is a resolution approving change number three to contract number one one eight two three Master Tower Services with Signal Point Systems Incorporated in the funded amount of seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars with no increase in rates from the previous year. Item number twenty-five, resolution awarding contract number one two zero one four MLGW Shaw Pumping Station Generator number one, switchgear replacement to Tri-State Armature and Electrical Works Incorporated in the funded amount of two hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars. Item number twenty-six is a resolution awarding a thirty-six-month purchase order for bare copper soft drawn tinned wire to Brighter Days and Nights, Inc. in the amount of four hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty dollars. Item number twenty-seven, resolution approving change number two to contract number one one eight two two Ignite Payments LLC, formerly First Data, in the funded amount of six million, two hundred thousand dollars. And item number twenty-eight, resolution awarding contract number one two zero three one MLGW Background Check to Data Facts Incorporated in the funded amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. And item number twenty-nine, resolution awarding contract number one two zero two four Employee Dental Plan to Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company in the funded amount of seven million, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Item number thirty, resolution approving change number six to contract number one zero one seven one Operating System Recovery Project with New Era Software Incorporated in the funded amount of two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And item number thirty-one is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Thomas Consultants for Citrix Software Subscription Renewal in the amount of one hundred four thousand, two hundred two dollars. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. This item has been moved by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Seeing no councilmembers in the queue, please cast your votes for MLGW fiscal consent.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number thirty-two.
Item number thirty-two on our regular agenda is an appointment to the joint position of the Memphis and Shelby County Air Pollution Control Board, appointment Eric Tickquist.
Councilman Morgan? Councilman Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
It's been moved by Councilman Morgan, please electronically, seconded by Councilwoman Fully Love, seeing no councilmembers in the queue. Please cast your votes for item number thirty-two. It's showing on the screen. Councilman Morgan moved it. Councilwoman Fully Love seconded. Thank you. Please cast your votes, councilmembers.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number thirty-four.
Item number thirty-four is a resolution seeking approval for the City of Memphis to use CIP executive cover line funding in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars to renovate the Youth Services Office at three fifteen South Hollywood. This resolution is sponsored by the Executive Division.
Councilman Ford?
Committee met, recommends approval, I so move, and thank you for the administration for putting this in.
All right. It has been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Morrison. Seeing no councilmembers in the queue, please cast your votes for item number thirty-four.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvette, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedgepath, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number thirty-five. Please call item number 35.
Item number 35 is a resolution amending the FY 2018 operating budget by approving the budget amendment to allocate and appropriate the Great American Steamboat Company loan number 845004, payoff balance of principal and interest in the amount of $2,153,278.71. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development Division.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. The committee met on this item, and this item was approved. It's an understandable item. It's a refund coming back from the revenue that we had invested in the Great Steamboat Company. But I'm really thinking, and I'm gonna move it, I'm gonna move it, and then I got some... I moved it.
All right.
It was approved in committee.
All right, this item's been moved by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilwoman Fully Love. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 35. Vote is already in process, Ms... Okay, once we read the vote, I'll come back to you, Mr. Brown.
Brown, yes; Canali, yes; Colbett, yes; Conrad, yes; Ford, yes; Fully Love, yes; Hetch Peth, yes; Morgan, yes; Morrison, yes; Robinson, yes; Swerengen, yes; Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Mr. Brown, you recognize.
All right, thank you, Chairman. The thing is that I think that this company, I don't know if this is the last end of the revenue or basically that we have five million and some dollars. So that's the thing is, I thought we had more to be returned than just what this amount is. But at the same time is, I will question the Director of HCD and find out, and I go from there, but I did approve, and I did vote yes for it, but I thought they owed us a lot more money than that.
All right, thanks for that clarity, Mr. Brown. All right, Madam Comptroller, please call item number 36.
Item number 36 is a resolution transferring $4,187,650.86 of GO bond allocations and appropriations from the Uptown Redevelopment Project, CD01079, to various CIP projects. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development Division.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met on this item, and it was approved in committee, and it was unanimously approved, and it's a transfer of revenue from one pocket where we can distribute among other capital projects, you know, within housing and community development. Thank you.
All right, this item's been moved by Mr. Brown, seconded by Councilman Hetch Peth. I had a quick question. Is Mr. Young still here?
He left, but the greatest of the revenue was going out to Raleigh, out to our Raleigh area project that we're gonna have out there, where we're gonna have a substation and some more things. It's capital on infrastructure and some IT work that's got to be done out there as well.
Okay. I just know that some... They're moving all of the money out of Uptown, and there are some projects that hadn't been completed in Uptown, so I'm just kinda confused.
Chairman, the thing is, you know, I thought maybe you would catch that the first time, but at the same time, you did raise the issue, why was this revenue coming out of Uptown? And Uptown is, you know, basically, but at the same time, is revenue was moved per committee, but at the same time is, there's a lot of projects that we hadn't finished in Uptown, because Uptown is my district as well.
Right.
So, but, you know, since the flow was gone, and the revenue was needed somewhere, you know, we put $100,000 over Collins Chapel.
Right.
We did do that. That was the smallest amount of revenue that went out. But the other revenue went to projects that we couldn't complete, because we didn't have enough revenue to complete them. So that was a pocket. It's just like, to me, it's like a loan, but at the same time is, we gotta find a way to put revenue back into Uptown, because that is one of the... That is, Uptown is your district, the Super 8 district as well, and that's the same thing was on my mind.
Yeah. Mr. McGowan, chief, could you explain, because there are a ton of infrastructure projects throughout Uptown that hasn't been completed, so, but we're moving, we've moved $6 billion, and now we're moving $4, so can you...
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Doug McGowan, Chief Operating Officer. I will give the basic description so that you understand what's happening here. There are some details Mr. Young can fill in, but essentially, this money is money that was advanced to begin the work in Uptown. It came from HCD, it was their, part of their money that was allocated to begin the work in Uptown while the TIF was getting underway and until increment was being generated. We now have reliable increment that's being generated in the Uptown TIF. We have identified through the TIF, the existing Uptown TIF and the TIF Amendment, $91 million of additional work that will be done to complete the infrastructure you're referencing, Chairman. All of the infrastructure improvements that were in the initial phase of Uptown are slated and funded with increments that come from the Uptown TIF. All of the expanded enhancements in the larger area of the TIF are also funded through those TIF increments. There is sufficient revenue that is coming into the TIF through the remainder of its duration to fund all of those projects. So this was money that was general fund money in the HCD fund that was on tap should they run out of resources to keep the work moving, but now we have sufficient TIF revenues that we can keep all of the work in Uptown. And I want to assure you again that none of the infrastructure projects that were identified for completion in the Uptown TIF will go without funding. They will all be funded and completed, and the Uptown TIF expansion will also be completed with TIF revenues. And we now have an organization also, as you all know, we approved the CRA, we now have a president, we have a community development coordinator, we have two staff members, we have people working full-time on that to make sure that those projects are moving ahead.
One quick caveat to that, chief, is the problem that I have is, why did the work have to stop if we had the funds to fund the work within the Uptown community? So looking at Bigford Street, and it's sad to say this, driving down Bigford Street is like driving on a gravel road, and that street is in the city of Memphis, it's right in front of Bigford Community Center. You look at Seventh Street, Seventh Street off of Bigford looks hideous as well. All the infrastructure sidewalks within Uptown is ridiculous, need to be repaired and replaced, but we've had this money sitting there, and no one's willing to continue the project, but now we're moving the money out of District 7, Super District 8, and here again, it's definitely well-needed in these various communities, but we need to make sure these projects continue, because here again, goes back to a conversation, let's rewind a little bit, where we're talking about infield redevelopment opportunities. If we can't provide adequate infrastructure in areas that the city has seen substantial growth in, we're going to be behind the eight ball to grow those areas and give the existing residents in those communities opportunity to see something new. So how do we know that this money that will come out of the TIF will go forward and to improve the infrastructure, and when will the project start?
Great point. Couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Chairman. At issue with any work that was not being completed as timely as possible was the issue of the transition from the original master developer to the CRA as we transition the organization. It wasn't the fact that there was a lack of money in the TIF to do the work. We had the sufficient resources, it was the transition of the team over to get the new team on board to get that moving. I just want to be clear that the money that you're talking about now was not in the TIF, it was in HCD fund that had been sitting there encumbered for years and hadn't been used. I would also mention that that $4 million that had been encumbered but hadn't been used, we'd spent more than $45 million in Uptown while that money sat there, so we had been expending money, and that, so that $4 million did not slow us down by not having it there. And as new revenues come in, again, it was simply a capacity of a transition from master developer. I realize it was a painful year and a half or two years while we went through that transition, and now I can say that we're up to speed. We have a reliable staff who's done incredible work in a very short period of time. We have a board that's committed in overseeing every aspect of this, so not only do we have the oversight of you all, but we have some incredible board members at the CRA who are committed. We also have the community accountability. We just did another meeting in Uptown where we reaffirm with everybody in the community, these are the priority projects that will be completed there, and the community knows what was committed to them. So triple accountability from the council, from the board, from the community, and also from my office and from the office of Mr. Kennedy. We want Uptown to be successful, we want the expanded TIF to be successful, and this money will not do anything to interrupt that flow of being successful in Uptown.
All right, one last thing. Can you provide a copy of the projects and the expectation date, expected start date, and expected complete date?
The projects, can you be more specific, which ones? We talked about a lot, Chairman. You mean the Uptown...
Uptown specific projects.
Sure, absolutely.
I want to see some start dates and some completion dates.
Absolutely. I'll have Ms. Willis, who's the president of the CRA, and Mr. Murray, who's the community development folks, put a list together, start-finish dates, and so we can see what to expect.
Okay, Mr. Brown, you recognize.
Thank you, Chairman. Chief McGowan, it's something, we wanted, I do want to say one thing to the council members, that something good really came out of the revenue itself in general. The transition of revenue funds was really good, because actually, it took care of the cost of the Canea Crenshaw Library, which the community had an outcry making sure that it be renovated. So it's a lot of good things came out of it, but I know that the concern probably was coming from the District 7 representative was the revenue itself in general. But you have assured Chairman Boyd as a District 7 representative, and then you got Fully Love and Martavis Jones, that revenue is gonna sort of be replaced in a sense coming from the different entities that it's gonna be, that's gonna come out of the TIFs, and I guess we got some OCR money coming out soon. But I don't know, but the thing is that what they want is, they still want to develop Uptown to the fullest, because there's one segment of Uptown where the area where African-Americans live, and they want to make sure that that property is being taken care of as well. And it was a concern, but at the same time is, revenue has to be used, but some good did come out, Collins Chapel, we gave them $100,000. Canea Crenshaw Library, some things in the communities, Raleigh just didn't get everything, but at the same time is, the revenue was good for a good cause. I got no problem with the good cause, not at all, but I knew it was gonna be a concern at some point, that they want to know why that revenue came out, which I want it to be explained by administration, because administration brought it to the table. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Seeing no other council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 36.
Brown, yes; Canali, yes; Colbett, yes; Conrad, yes; Ford, yes; Fully Love, yes; Hetch Peth, yes; Morgan, yes; Morrison, yes; Robinson, yes; Swerengen, yes; Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 37.
Item number 37 is a resolution approving low base bid from Wagner General Contractors for CIP FY 2018, project number PK03004, tennis major maintenance, general contract construction, and to approve and accept the base bid of $770,223, with alternate number two of $160,000 with contingency of $19,777, for a total of $950,000 from Wagner General Contractors for CIP project number PK0304, and to allocate and appropriate $950,000 in CIP FY 2018, project number PK03004, tennis major maintenance contract construction. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Neighborhoods Division.
Councilman Canali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Canali, seconded by Councilwoman Fully Love. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for item number 37.
Brown, yes; Canali, yes; Colbett, yes; Conrad, yes; Ford, yes; Fully Love, yes; Hetch Peth, yes; Morgan, yes; Morrison, yes; Robinson, yes; Swerengen, yes; Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 38.
Item number 38 is a resolution authorizing and funding improvements at the Liberty Bowl Memorial Stadium in the amount of $300,000. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Hetch Peth and Councilwoman Swerengen.
Councilman Hetch Peth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
It's been moved by Councilman Hetch Peth, seconded by Councilman Brown, seeing no one in the queue, cast your votes for number 38.
Brown, yes; Canali, yes; Colbett, yes; Conrad, yes; Ford, yes; Fully Love, yes; Hetch Peth, yes; Morgan, yes; Morrison, yes; Robinson, yes; Swerengen, yes; Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. Please call item number 39.
Item number 39 is a resolution creating an exploratory committee to study the feasibility of increasing part-time employee salaries to $15 per hour. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Ford.
Councilman Ford.
Mr. Chairman, the committee met and recommended positive approval. I'd like to move this on the floor, and I want to go ahead and say this real quick. This is part two of what the council has been able to do in the last budget. You know, we passed a budget two weeks ago, and in that budget, we were able to take care of full-time employees that don't necessarily have the representation that you see down here, that we saw during the impasse meetings, and I was able to see a lot of those employees that would be affected. And I don't know if council members were able to see some of these people that were affected, but I was able to see probably about five or six PSTs, your police service technicians, who were making about 13, but now they're making 15 an hour. I also got a chance to be at the library, the central library, for about a couple hours. I mentioned a lady that's been working in the library since 1972, 46 years, 46 years. And I was able to see her. Her name is Valerie, just like you, and she comes to work 15 minutes early every day. She works downstairs in the basement of the library, so you would never see the work that she does unless you consciously decided to do so. I got a chance to see probably about 30 of the employees, and I guarantee that they were It was a diverse group of people, black, white, Hispanic, Asian. Many of them had situations, but they were very appreciative of somebody looking at them, because I remember the former director saying that that used to be the dumping ground for putting people in a job. Ladies and gentlemen, they do a remarkable job, and we probably don't see the work that they do, especially if somebody goes to the library, retrieves a book, or receives service. They don't know who's behind the scenes taking care of that service. When I talked to Valerie about it, it was very emotional. When I talked to the PSTs that had to deal with particular items that I don't think I'd be able to deal with, I'm glad that this council was able to take care of those that may have been underrepresented, and we're talking about over 400. Now with this resolution, I don't want the work that we completed to be finished. That's why I want an exploratory committee to start looking at what we can do for the part-time employees, and let me give you some good news. There are three divisions already that are doing this work right now to try to get people who are part-time, 15 or more an hour. Fiscal note, and I'm throwing this out here a year in advance so that council members can plan accordingly, is about $3 million. But if those three divisions are working on it right now, other divisions might start working on it as well, to where it might not be a large fiscal note for this council next year. So I think it's important that we continue the work, and anybody that wants to discount that work, I guarantee they wouldn't give those folks two minutes of their... those folks two minutes of their time to show their appreciation. And I just wanted to say that. So if you see one of these librarians, see one of these PSTs, one of these ground or building maintenance workers, just take time to tell them thank you. If they don't tell you thank you first. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. This item's been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Brown. I do have a card on Therensey Bond for item number thirty-nine. Please state your name and address for the record. Two minutes will begin at the end.
Therensey Bond, six eighty-one West Raines Road, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero nine. We really don't need to create an exploratory committee to study the feasibility of increasing part-time salaries to fifteen dollars an hour. We already know that. There's no need to create a committee just to study something that we've already deemed is necessary. It sounds like a surefire way to yet again waste taxpayers' dollars to fund an initiative that just may make you look good, similar to the feasibility study that was done to the tune of eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars in regards to Kroger, retroactively. Members of this thirteen-count legislative body at that time just gave money away to an individual whose work was only vetted by one council member, one. The constituents in District Six knew what we needed, and in time to be proactive, how come our representative did not? Now, this feasibility study term is being thrown around again by that very same council member, this time regarding wages that should have been studied and solidified before the budget was approved. How many more instances of waiting to the last minute and being behind the ball at the expense of the constituents are going to take place? And if the excuse is lack of knowledge, being overwhelmed, or simply having a full plate you're constantly working to manage, then I'd like to suggest that that very same council member vacate his seat sooner than later so he can take a break, rest up in hopes of being as prepared as he possibly can be to be proactive as a commissioner in the fall, and allow somebody else to come in that will fully embrace all of the district and vow to keep the constituents and not the corporations first in an effort to stay ahead, remain ahead, and never be behind again.
All right.
Look, no back and forth in the chambers. All right, please, council members, cast your votes for number, item number thirty-nine. Cast your votes for item number thirty-nine.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colbett, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. All right, same night minutes. Staff, oh, Councilman Conrad, forgot about it. Go ahead, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Wade wanted us just to do the resolution authorizing the administration to enter into the temporary operating agreement with shared mobility companies. So if I could just suspend the rules for reading this into the record and hopefully voting on it tonight. Same night minutes, yes.
So far, without objection.
Thank you. This is a resolution authorizing the city of Memphis to enter into temporary agreements to permit the use of shared mobility vehicles on city right-of-way. Do I need to read the whole thing, or is the caption enough?
Just read the caption to the record.
And I'll move it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ford on this item?
Sure. No, I don't have a question.
All right. Madam Controller, please, special item one. You what you did. All right. And council members, this item's been moved by Councilman Conrad, seconded by Councilman Canali. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your votes for special item one, which is a resolution authorizing the city of Memphis to enter into temporary agreements to permit the use of shared mobility vehicles on city right-of-ways. Requesting same night minutes as well.
Canali, yes. Colbett, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. All right. Staff, do you have same night minutes, or do you want, do you need some time? Is that yes, no? Do you have same night minutes? Staff members, do you have same night minutes ready? Thank you. Okay, we'll go to public comments. I have Bunny, I think it's Chittister or Chidester, or Michael Wilson, Mr. Yahweh, and Mr. Simmons in that order, please. Please state your name and address for the record, and your two minutes will begin.
My name is Bonnie Chittister, six six nine Adams Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one oh five. I am here to ask all of the council people who are running for election for the county commission to be willing to go on record to resign your seat here in a timely manner so that elections will not be delayed and your seat will not go unfilled. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Wilson, Mr. Yahweh, Stephen Simmons.
Good evening, LaMichael Wilson, forty-three fifty-five Rhodes Avenue, three eight one one one. Last meeting, I came before you and called upon council members Fully Love, Morrison, and Ford to resign on August third if they should win their elections on August second. In response, we heard not from the council members themselves, but from Chairman Boyd, who stated that the city council's special elections are only held during Shelby County general elections, and I am here to correct his misstatement. I wish to read from Home Rule, ordinance number eighteen fifty-two, which was the ordinance that changed the form of the Memphis city government regarding council vacancies, and I quote, "A successor shall be elected to fill out the remainder of the term of the councilman who's seat was vacated in the same manner as now provided for filling of vacancies on the board of commissioners, except that such special municipal election shall be held on the date of the next regular August or November election." So let us not speak falsely now. The timely resignations of those council members who win in August can and should trigger a special election in November, giving voice to the tens of thousands of constituents who would otherwise see their elective franchise thrown out by an unhearing government. It's not too late to do the right thing. Council members Fully Love, Morrison, and Ford can still pledge to resign on August third if they win on August second. Your constituents are waiting, and so shall I. As a side note, the council failed the citizens of Irwin, of the Irvin neighborhood today, citizens who are not paid to sit in these chambers. Let's grant the citizens of the city the privilege to elect representatives who will listen to their concerns and who will vote based on policy and not hurt feelings. Thank you.
I will say again, Mr. LaMichael Wilson, I was totally not wrong. So go back and read the charter again, and I have a whole opinion written on what you just said, sir. Thank you. Mr. Yahweh?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Some fifty years, forty-five, fifty years ago, when I began to help shape and mold Memphis both politically and socially, we were concerned then about the children, when the adults, the people. Of course, now we're more concerned about property than we are people, and we can see now what is beginning to happen. Right now, Memphis is leading the nation in many, many illnesses, and what is happening is because of the fact that you're putting the geotoxic, carcinogenic, neurotoxic, hazardous waste, poison, acid into the drinking water, which is causing cancer. That's why we, as African Americans, have so much arthritis and asthma because of these particular things. I came to you some time ago and began to tell you when I moved from dealing with the lead water lines to recognizing that the fact that the geotoxic, it leaches the lead, which means it is more toxic than lead and less toxic than acid. This go into the babies. Babies is, and take this acid and cannot excrete it. So what do that mean? And that's why we got so much problems in terms of the thinking about children and babies because of the damage done. I was saying to you back then, I didn't want the EPA to get involved on the fluoride part. Of course, they was involved in the lead part, but I wanted to say, well, wait a minute, no, we here in Memphis. We do have the compassion, we have the intellectual integrity and the moral fortification to begin the correct problem that's going to be affecting our children, babies, and others. We gonna put that first, but I didn't know that property would become first. Well, let me just say this. I've done all I could. You got the information. I've given it to you. And just recently, I made sure everybody got the same information based on the letter from the president, and that is, made sure that the Health Department got the information, environmental, of course, got the information. We making sure that yesterday, we made sure that Mayor Luthen got the information, as well as the county got the information, because we're now EPA voting in town on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So we got to go ahead and go to the EPA because people are suffering, and I paid it in attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Simmons, Carlos Ocha, Ruth Banks.
I am Stephen Simmons. I live at seven eighty-one Lee Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one oh seven. I just wanted to say that I hope that the police officers that got ran over this past week don't wind up in the same situation with the city of Memphis as I did. I mean, you get hurt on the job, they treat you like you're nothing, nobody. They take your settlements, they take your money, they take your health care, they take, they take your health, and then just throw you out like you're nothing. I got, I had to go to the mercy room last night by ambulance because of muscle spasms that nobody seemed want to do anything about, that I did not have until I got ran over by this truck, working for the city of Memphis, which was no fault whatsoever mine, even though the accident report said, I keep saying that I worked on this truck. I never seen or touched this truck until it ran over me. I had nothing to do with this truck until it ran over me. So I don't understand why I'm, why I can't get medication, I can't get health care, I can't get anything done. They tell me, just to see the doctors that I was already seeing, I gotta have copays, I gotta have referrals, all this to see the doctors that I was already seeing. And it don't make sense to me. Why am I constantly losing in this?
Are you asking that question, sir?
Yeah.
You want me to give you the answer?
Yeah.
You want the truth?
Yes.
All right, I'll give it to you. So let me give it to you. So do you remember signing a document called the Lost Consortium Settlement Agreement?
But they told me I had to sign a settlement.
Now, do you remember signing an agreement called the Loss of Consortium Settlement Agreement? I have your signature here that you signed. It was documented. So that document, you released the city of Memphis from all harms when they paid you that lump sum settlement that...
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
This is, this is...
The city didn't pay me anything.
Mr. Simmons, do you want me to call out the dollar amount?
You can call out anything you want. They paid me nothing.
All right. Here's a check, sir. I'm looking at the copy of the check that you received.
The check that I received?
Hello, it was your wife. Ms. Vivian Payne.
Who?
Is that not your, Ms. Vivian Simmons Payne?
Vivian Simmons Payne.
That's the name on the check, sir, on your record, two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Paid to Vivian Simmons, not Stephen Simmons.
Sir, on this document, she was representing you.
No, sir. She got a check for loss of consortium. It had nothing whatsoever to do with Stephen Simmons.
Mr. Simmons, I have, sir, hold up, hold up. We're not going back, Mr. Simmons.
If you look at the paper, you say it's no money was paid to Stephen Simmons for getting her work with city equipment.
Mr. Simmons, I'm going over your file with you because you've been coming down here for quite some time. So what I wanted to do, I wanted to dig in and look at the facts.
Okay.
And I'm going through the paper trail of everything that was in your, your file. Let me also share with you something. This was the interesting part about you. You were granted the line of duty disability pension, which went into effect on four one, two thousand fourteen, okay? It was due to the injuries that you received, that you were hurt on the job. You also received the city of Memphis health care through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. You got the OJI policy, which allowed you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city has paid approximately seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars out from the OJ fund on your case. I have all the documents, sir, that where you sign, your, your signature's on it. And this is, this is where it changed the game, when you signed a loss of consortium settlement agreement. Your signature's on it, and that removed the city from any responsibility as it relates to Mr. Simmons going forward. That was your signature, sir.
Okay, my signature was on there because they told me I had to sign this paper in order for Vivian Simmons to get her settlement, not Stephen Simmons. Stephen Simmons did not receive a settlement. Now, you're talking about the medical expenses. Wait a minute, wait a minute. The medical expenses. I got hurt on the job, but no fault whatsoever mine, even though y'all keep saying that I was working on this truck. I never touched this truck until it ran over me. So why am I paying for medical expenses?
Mr. Simmons, that was a part of your agreement that you signed when you filed a lawsuit against the city of Memphis, and they came to you with the amount. I'm not debating, hello, Mr. Simmons, I'm, I'm taking up too much time because we have some other people want to speak. But what I will say is, whoever Ms. Vivian Simmons is, you need to have a talk with her, because that's where your check went.
No, sir. That's where her check went.
Here's the check, sir.
That's where her check went.
Sir, whoever Ms. Vivian...
It also stated on that same, on the same paper that you're talking about, wait a minute, on the same paper you're talking about, it said no money's being paid to Stephen Simmons.
She was representing you, Mr. Simmons?
No, she was not. No, she was not.
Okay, the paperwork lied. I'm just reading off of...
Well, it said I got ran over by a white truck. I got ran over by a tan truck, a garbage truck. It said that I was working on this truck. I was not working on this truck. I never seen or touched this truck until it ran over me. So the paperwork is lying. Is that where you want to cut it?
Look, sir.
I also...
Okay, Mr. Simmons, hold up. Just order, 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 hold up. Do me a favor, do me a favor. You and I, sir, hold up, Mr. Simmons, I'm not going back and forth with you, but you and I will have a conversation after the meeting. I don't mind.
That's right.
But what I will tell you is, I went above and beyond. I pulled your file, sir, because you come down here constantly. The city council has no control over it. This is not even my job to go into administrative duties. This is administrative. But the problem, when we told you to go and get an attorney, you messed yourself up, sir, because you signed the Loss of Consortium Settlement. You signed that at a, you, you signed it. It's your signature. That, that messed you up. So you can't sue the city. You're done. That's, that's the unfortunate part, and whoever Ms...
I hope that's not the unfortunate part for these other officers that just got ran over.
Hopefully, they hire legal counsel, sir.
Why did you have to have legal counsel when you got hurt on the job?
Well, sir, I wish you would have legal counsel before you signed your document.
Well, I was told to sign this document in order for Vivian Simmons to get her settlement.
That's why you need a lawyer, because you probably didn't know what you were signing at the time.
The lawyer one told me to sign it.
Well, you need to go find him and have a talk with him. He don't need to be practicing law because he wasn't representing you, obviously.
Well, neither's the city.
You signed the document. I mean, we'll talk after, sir, we will talk, sir, I have other people want to speak.
I understand that.
I will give you time after the meeting. You and I have a conversation. But I just wanted to share this with you, and I'm gonna move on, and you and I can discuss it after the meeting. If you want to stay, I'll be here.
Okay.
Carlos Ocha, Ruth Banks, Walter Brody. Hopefully, I didn't butcher your last name.
No, you didn't, but I do appreciate you trying. My name, my last name is Ochoa. My first name is, yeah, Carlos Ochoa, five seven zero, Podesta Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one two zero. So I was told today that Mary Beth Connolly, who is a local TV personality, said that she interviewed Councilwoman Patrice Robinson and Councilman Worth Morgan today on the Live at Nine show. She asked about the prompt resignation issue, about whether or not the council members who are running for a city, or for a county seat should resign if they do win their election in August. Both of them said yes, to my knowledge. Both of them said yes, to my knowledge, of course, prompt resignation and in, and in November, and a November election was the appropriate thing to do if the councilmembers win their county seat. The voters should, and I, I'm here to say that I believe this, I think this is, I think that they were spot on. The voters of Memphis should have the chance to fill the vacancy in a democratic manner. And of course, there is a caveat that the city council should have the ability to appoint an interim for the brief window of time between August and November. So I just wanted to come and voice my support for those councilpeople who voiced that opinion, and also say that I am in favor of a prompt resignation, not because I don't like Councilmember Morrison, or Boyd, or Fully Love. Y'all have a really hard job over here, and I do appreciate it. But I do think that it is, there might be a legal basis for it, and I like to see that kind of teased out a little bit more, but I think that there's also some moral and some civic responsibilities that are, that should push a resignation. So thank you very much.
Councilman Morgan, see you in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clear the record for my colleagues who may have missed Live at Nine yesterday morning, I, I don't recall saying yes. I'll tell you what I did say when I was asked the question, is that I trusted Councilman Morrison, Full Love, and Ford to act in the best intentions of their constituents and the future of the city council. I didn't think that if they were staying in the seat, that it was for some of the accusations that people have leveled against them, and that I trust them to make the right decision. And there are many considerations to take in, to take into deliberation as they're making that consideration, and I certainly didn't say yes. Be happy to email the video if I can find it to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Morgan, now I have Ms. Banks, and we have Mr. Brody. Please state your name and address for the record, and your time will start.
Banks, my address is twelve twenty-four Will Cove, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one C, road nine. I'm from Westwood. I am here to voice my concern for some of our colleagues or registered voters wanting to push Councilman Ford, Full Love, and Morris out of office. I feel that they have the right to stay here until the election is over in August or November, and also I want to say to this council that you all are doing a great job. I find it very, very sad and disheartening for someone to come here and make a statement saying that the citizen, and I have been working in the community for years, and for someone to say that the citizen want Councilman Ford, Morrison, and Full Love to vacate their seat before the election is over, why aren't those individuals here? Why aren't they here? Now, I am upset because of a meeting that was held at Riverside Church, and this young lady back here made this statement to us, and she called us "you people." Now, if this person want to represent the "you people," then the "you peoples" in three eight one oh nine, we have a problem with this individual. I say to Councilman Ford, Councilman Full Love, and Councilman Morris, keep on doing the great job that you're doing until your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Ma'am, look, order in my chamber, please, please. One more outburst, we will escort you out. All right. Before we get to Mr. Brody, we need to do same-night minutes. Yes, sir, Mr. Ford.
I thank you. I do have the same-night minutes for tonight, and these are the following items. I have the minutes for items forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and sixty of the regular meeting in the city council, city of Memphis. I find them in order, and I like to move their adoption. Ms. Banks, thank for, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. And when you call "you people," it's open season, and it's their fault. So, hey.
All right. That item's been moved by Councilman Ford, second by Councilman Morrison. Signal councilmembers in the queue, please cast your votes for special item number two, which is our same-night minutes.
Brown, yes. Canali, yes. Colvet, yes. Conrad, yes. Ford, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Boyd, yes.
That item passes. And to that young lady that was here and spoke, just wanted to say thank you. It's good to hear kind words from time to time. This is a thankless job, and we put a lot of time and effort into doing it for our constituents. Mr. Brody closes out.
All right. My name is Walter Brody. I stay at forty-two fifty-six, Lebbitico, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one oh nine. Westwood, let's stop throwing punches, and we all love each other, okay? Let's go into prayer. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you again. Father God, continue to bless everybody here. Father God, continue to bless all the city councilmembers. Father God, you're doing a good job. Father God, continue to be with the church. Father God, continue to give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Father God, continue to bless Mr. Wade. Father God, Father God, bless all the men and women behind the scenes that's working real hard. Father God, Father God, bless all the policemen here. Father God, Father God, bless everybody who came here and voiced their opinion. Father God, bless them in the mighty name of Jesus. Father God, bless all our leaders. Father God, Father God, bless everybody. Bless all the Republican, Democrat, bless our president of the United States of America, Donald Trump. Father God, Father God, bless both our merrows. Father God, Father God, bless all the immigrants. Father God, give them a special miracle blessing. Father God, Father God, they're going through a whole lot. Father God, Father God, let them know that this is a line of Christians. Father God, and Father God, send someone to bless all of them in the mighty name of Jesus. Father God, bless everybody in this city, this state, this country, and all around the world in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you, God.
Minutes return.